All set, Joanne? What? Oh, okay. All right, North Smithfield Town Council meeting, March 6, 2023. Madam Clerk, you sat us in the prayer and the pledge, please.
Thank you for bringing us together today in the spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind, may we voice our truth and listen with an open heart, may we discern your will to unite in fruitful outcome. Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just sign your name and your address, okay? Oh, sorry. Rule call, please.
Mr. Bureau God.
Here.
Ms. Hamilton.
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Here.
Mr. O'Gier.
Here.
Ms. Alves.
Here.
All right, open forum, pursuant to 42-6-6, minimum fifteen, maximum fifteen minutes. Keandre Alexander, please, did you want to step up?
All right, hello, my name is Keandre Alexander. I'm a senior at North Smithfield High School, and as you may know, North Smithfield High School seniors almost continue and complete a senior project in order to graduate, and this year for my senior project, I would like to put on and set up and run a color run and donate all proceeds to Special Olympics, and the main reason I'm here today is to ask if the town is willing to host this event, and if the town is willing, I would just need a police detail, insurance, and the access to the road, which is Main Street, and that would be from Pacheco Park all the way down to Gators Pub and then back. So it's just a short part of Main Street, but that's the main reason.
What's a color run?
It's just a short run, it's going to be two and a half miles, and all participants would have white shirts, and they would go all the way down and then back, and volunteers would throw color and stain the shirts, so I'm mainly doing this because I have Special Olympics, it's a huge part of my life, I love doing it, so I decided to dedicate my whole senior year to it.
Did you have a date you're planning on?
May 20th is a Sunday.
It would be my pleasure to work with you on this. I think it's a great idea, unifies not only students but the town itself.
Thank you.
What was the time you're shooting to do?
About nine in the morning.
Till?
It should take three to five hours, so nine until 12:00. Around two hours, sorry.
Okay. And the road, so would the road need to be closed totally?
Probably, it's a small road.
Did, um, the chief, did you want to weigh in on this at all, or?
If it's on Main Street, it's a state rule, we need state permission to shut it down. I would suggest we have blue braces in the path, maybe one lane, keep one lane open, and then you can use one lane to go, I guess you're going to Gators and run back.
Yeah.
Or we could choose a different direction.
I mean, one lane, I feel as if would work well.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have some state, although it's a.
All right, thank you.
You got them worked through.
Thank you.
So Chief, can, can we have him send his contact information to you and?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Good luck. Mike Clifford.
Mike Clifford, 489 Black Plain Road. I mentioned it casually before, but I'm going to go into a little more detail this time and just ask if you would consider, please, putting on the council agenda, the opportunity to discuss actions against the two previous architects who worked on the project for the police station, and those are RGB and Secosia. There's a, the registered architects have a code of ethics that they have to follow, and I believe I can present a presentation to you that will demonstrate they did, in fact, in my opinion at least, violate several of those articles, and as a result of those articles being violated, there's different disciplinary action that can be taken against those lawyers, those, the architects, but what my main goal is, is I think that there is a lawsuit that could be filed against those two individuals, and it should be started with complaints with the Registered Architect Board. So that's what I'm asking you to do, is to consider putting it on the agenda, if you do, I'll go detail by detail over the items that they've, I believe, the articles in that code that they violated, some very serious, and so that's, that's what my request is, that you consider putting it on the agenda and let me know, and I'll be happy to prepare a nice PowerPoint presentation. Second thing is, I know everybody likes to say, we don't maintain our buildings, we don't maintain our buildings, and it's like, there's no mystery about why we don't maintain our buildings. We don't maintain our buildings because the budget is inadequate, and the budget is inadequate because we pay so much in debt, debt payments, so, you know, we ran out and borrowed all the money for the middle school, and then shortly after it was built, eliminated the foreign language program, eliminated the industrial arts program, eliminated the home economics program, including all the equipment, the hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment that were in those rooms, all went out, because we didn't have enough money to even operate the building, because nobody looks at the operating costs and the budgets. So the Budget Committee in the council doesn't make a choice of not maintaining the buildings because, you know, they didn't feel like maintaining the buildings, they make that choice because you either pay the people that you have on salary now and the staffs that you have to run the thing, or you go without, and they went without, you know, that's it. Anybody who served on the Budget Committee is well aware that it's inadequate, and we need, I'm going to repeat it again, at least five years of no debt service to be paying so that we can catch up on all the capital. Instead of paying debt payments, put the money in capital, big bucks, millions per year, we can afford, okay? And then once we get caught up, if you want to go, you know, take yourself into debt, up to your knees again, up to your eyes again, go right ahead, but that's what gets us in trouble, and we should learn from our mistakes, and the mistake is taking on too much debt. Thank you.
I'm sure we can consider this and then later put it on the agenda, and that would be the place for everybody to discuss it, you can look into it also, and it would give us a chance. Thank you, Mr. Clifford.
Anyone else wish to speak in open forum? All right, executive session, discussion by council voter other action. First of all, I'd like to move executive session number three and four to the end of the meeting so we can come back out a little bit quicker, but discussion, council voter other action, Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A2, sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation, or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or potential litigation. One, Dominant Prep versus Town in North Smithfield Superior Court Case PC 2013-4527, and Mark Morris versus Town in North Smithfield Superior Court Case PC 2013-4528, and North Smithfield Town Council in its capacity as Town Council and as Water Commissioners for the Sladeville Water System, a potential litigation. Can I have a motion to go into executive?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second that motion.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Bureau God.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier.
Yes.
Ms. Alves.
Yes.
Did you guys get all these letters? It's all the same one? For the, um, no trespassing. Maybe you guys are supposed to get a copy? Cause I got like five copies.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No. I don't think so.
Good, uh, we're back there.
Wait.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
So what?
Okay.
I make a motion that we come out of executive session on items one and two. And let the record reflect that there was one vote taken and to seal the minutes.
Second motion?
So we have a motion as second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
Yes.
Ms. Alves.
Yes.
All right. North Smithfield Town Council sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissioners. Discussion by council voter other action on special event liquor license class F DBA Blackstone Millville, St. Andre, Basset Knights of Columbus Council number fifteen, one five eight two nine LLC located at Divine Mercy's Parish Center, St. Paul Street.
Good evening. Oops, sorry. Dropped something over there. My name is Jeff Highcove. I'm here to represent the Knights of Columbus, Blackstone, Massachusetts, Council number one five eight two nine. On March eleventh, we are hosting a Irish night at the parish hall. As you may be aware, we have a, um, unique circumstance in Blackstone where the parish itself is in Blackstone. Half the driveways in Blackstone and the rest of it is in North Smithfield. So we're here to ask for a, um, one day liquor license, um, class F, which is beer and wine. So we can have our Irish night. We'll be serving corned beef and cabbage, um, along with beer and wine.
I have one question. Madam President, I have one question. And maybe it's for the clerk. Do we have enough liquor licenses left? Or can we approve one off liquor license?
This is just a, it's just a special license.
Okay. That's all I need to know. So I make a motion to approve the application. It looks like everything has been, up to this point, has been completed or paid. And that would be a motion to approve the special liquor license event for March eleventh.
A second.
We have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
Yes.
Ms. Alves.
Yes.
Have fun.
Thank you very much.
Have fun and good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion by council voter other action on status slash progress report on completion of specific items. Uh, one discussion by council voter other action on municipal building review task force. Mr. Nordstrom.
I have no report. I can answer any questions they have if not meeting Thursday.
Thursday, right?
Six forty-five.
I have a question actually. Is it possible to get a copy of their presentation in advance? They won't give up a PowerPoint?
They, they, I sent an email before the meeting asking them for fifteen copies.
Yeah, okay.
Before the meeting.
Okay.
So we can at least look over as they're talking.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I did that last time, but I only did twelve and that was clearly not enough. So. So.
And they're going to have it up on the screen too, like normal, right?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That was easy.
All right. We're going to skip down to discussion by council voter, other action on grant writer needed for the town in North Smithfield. Mr. Bureau God.
So, as you know, we have spoken a lot back in two thousand and sixteen when we spoke, when I was on the council in sixteen, we talked about getting a grant writer. It was discussed in our last council. And Mr. Oger brought it up at this council. And so recently, I was sent an article in The Valley Breeze by a member of the planning board, Lucien Benoit. And the article was, nice article in The Valley Breeze about how they received over three million dollars in, in grants. And the person who was responsible for that is standing up here at the podium, Lisa Andoja.
A hometown girl.
Hometown girl from North Smithfield, who not only was able to secure three million dollars in grants, and I'll let her pitch herself, but she was not only able to secure three million dollars in grants from, for North Providence, but several million dollars for the surrounding communities as well. I spoke to her at length. We had many conversations, and I asked her to come before the council and speak about grant writing and what she could possibly do for the town. And Ms. Andoja, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam President, Vice President, well-respected members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening to have a conversation relative.
Excuse me, is that on? No. I can't hear you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you to have a discussion on grant writing and administration so you could generate new revenue. May I please present a handout? Can this be admitted? Let me start off by saying it's wonderful to be back home. My parents actually moved from Providence when I was eight years old, and I grew up in North Smithfield. I, I loved living in North Smithfield. I went to college. I returned. I'm, I'm living now in Rhode Island, and it's just nice to be back. I appreciate the opportunity to come and have a conversation with you on just identifying, every municipality is unique. The demographics are unique. Your community projects will be unique, your developments, whatever you want to secure funding for. And I work with municipalities to identify what their priorities are and what agencies or source of funding might be compatible to secure new funding. If you actually look at the list on page two and page three for the town in North Providence, I secured over three million dollars. And if you look at North Providence, Cranston, Cumberland and Smithfield, all the grants secured are extremely different. And in this increasingly competitive environment, I work with a municipality to actually position them and customize their grant application so they stand out from the crowd.
So how, how is it that you can work for, I guess I'm just wondering how it would work by working with other communities? Like if you're doing grants for North Providence or Cumberland, how are they not bidding, how are they not going against us, like putting in for grants? Am I saying that right? Like how are we not, like outbidding ourselves for a grant? If you're doing a grant for, for other communities, say for the same grant, and you're doing one for us? How, how is it that you could do them for all these communities at the same time?
Madam President, that's a great question. Every community, as I mentioned, is unique. And I have relationships, I have for over twenty and a half years, doing consulting and doing grant writing. So I actually have relationships with state and federal agencies. I have a relationship with the U.S. EPA Region One, with two individuals. I've worked with them over the years. I work with DEM, I work with DOT, I work with Rhode Island Commerce. Every single congressional member knows me on a first-name basis. They know my clients. And what I do is I just customize what their requests are. And I'm realistic. Clients might want to have something funded that is not shovel-ready or project-ready. That's not going to get funded. So I'll identify another priority. I'll identify items that are on the budget that could actually be eligible for grants. For example, how, how I actually interact with a client is, it's very unique in each municipality. For example, in the city of Cranston, I'm a direct report to the president of the council, but I work with the mayor and the, and the council to develop what their priorities are. So when a grant opportunity becomes available, I'll actually forward it. I will discuss the deadline. I'll discuss the match, and I'll ask them what their priorities are, based on that being project-ready and shovel-ready. From there, I actually leverage relationships that I've built over the years, and I will get very strong letters of support from the president of the Senate, the Speaker of the House, congressional members, depending on if it's a state or federal grant. I just leverage relationships. I work closely with them. I can tell you what Rhode Island Commerce is going to put out this year. I can tell you when they're going to put it out. DEM with recreational grants, open space grants. I, I know the deadlines because I just keep in contact and communication with them on a regular basis. But that's a very good question. And so if you actually look at the different types of funding, for example, North Smithfield was very successful in getting funding, I believe, four million dollars for a senior center. There's a match required to that. And so you could actually apply CDBG funds as part of your match, because anything involving elderly, per HUD rules and regulations, they're, it's considered an eligible expense.
So it's actually, it's actually a multi-generational facility? So would that really, would that still qualify for a senior?
Are the majority of those individuals who are using it seniors?
Well, it's going to, it's going to be scouts, seniors and the community.
Sure. I believe I saw a, is it community senior center? Was that the wording on it?
Multi-generational.
Multi-generational. Are the seniors going to utilize it for meals and social services?
Probably.
It qualifies.
It's windy?
Yeah, it qualifies. So that would come out of the Office of Housing and Community Development, Michael Tandra, but that would be an area where you could actually apply for funding. Rhode Island Commerce will have a grant, it's actually a grant out now, March twenty-ninth, for site readiness. So engineering fees would be eligible for that. There will be another grant out through Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, a couple of grants actually out, for project readiness and then Wi-Fi and also infrastructure. So there's different sources of funding you can get to, to satisfy your match. Hollowell School is another example. So Hollowell School, DEM in August or September, will be putting out an RFP for both large and small recreational grants. And if you wanted to preserve that, if you wanted to demolish it and preserve it as open space, that would be an eligible, that would be a very strong submittal.
Can I ask a quick question?
Uh huh.
So when you're working with a municipality and you said you'd discover their priorities and things of that nature, would you be able to tell the council, when you're applying for a grant, what the match is so that the council can make a decision whether or not those matching funds exist prior to? Because I wouldn't want us to go forward with many grants and then have, you know, an opportunity to lose that grant, right? Because we didn't get the big picture, right? So would that be something you would do? That's question one. Question two, do you do anything with grant management?
That's a great question, Councilwoman Hamilton. I work very closely with municipalities, and I send the grant opportunity to whoever the designees may be. And I say that plural. I actually put the deadline, the maximum amount you can apply, eligibility and the match. So it's known in advance. Now, if there are other state agencies that we could potentially apply for that could satisfy it, I would have that conversation. Because I think that the town of North Smithfield really wants to secure as much funding as possible off balance sheet without taxpayer dollars. So you can free up that revenue for other priorities.
I, I guess my question is, I just don't want to burden, you know, the, so let me ask you this. If you go out and you get five grants and there's no grant management component attached to it, then who would be responsible in the town? So it'd be the designee of the town. So in our case, the town planner and the town assistant planner. So you'd work with them to manage the grant after, or how does that work?
Sure. So I do administration, and so that is compliant, any kind of compliance reports, any kind of deadlines, and then the financial drawdown, right? Because there's usually a deadline, use it or lose it. And there's a designee, a staff member, who actually does the implementation. So usually, they go out to procure, you know, competitive bid for procurement, and whatever guidance they need, I provide it. For example, I saw, I believe it was, was it two thousand and twenty-two, you received an EPA award? I think it was like one point two million? Was it for St. Paul Street? Okay. See, I did my research. So if there hasn't been any outreach yet to EPA Region One, I have a wonderful relationship with them, so I could contact them. And there's actually a checklist of, of, of issues that have to be satisfied, and I'd work very closely with a designated staff member. Mark Spinelli. And actually, I, I've worked with his boss, who was Katie Marapies as well.
So administrator, the designated person would be whom?
Well, currently, for the four grants that we have, the water and sewers taking care of St. Paul Street, Mallory Tower, the multi-generational is being taken care of by the planners, and with the COPS, that's an acronym for police vehicles and electronics, is being administered, administered by the chief.
Okay. So I guess my question would be, if we're getting additional grants with the assistance of our new grant writer person, are we well-staffed enough to be able to accommodate all these? Because we could lose them, and that's even worse than going out and getting them.
There are drop dead dates on these grants that go out to the future. When people read this grant, it's not dropping dead in one year. It goes out for a number of years. But the important thing to realize here, if we hire a grant writer, it's the administrative, the reporting, the connections that this grant writer has. Our staff still have to do daily operational planning and daily operational water and sewer. So they're stretched out. They really, they're doing yeoman work on top of everything else. So a grant writer would bring, you know, if you look at the return on investment for hiring a grant writer, it's really an easy decision.
Yep. Thanks.
But I'm not sure your question was answered. So yes, we would have a grant writer do all, everything that is under her umbrella, but then she says she has to work with someone designated at, at the town.
Yes.
So who would be the, is it depending on what department it's in or?
So if it were DPW, the DPW director would be the contact. If it were police, it would be the chief. Anything to do with planning, infrastructure, the, the planners can help assist, give the materials, that type of things, water and sewer. So, you know, playground, again, DPW, that type of.
So you would actually write the grant?
Oh, okay. So you'll be. I research, I track the grants, I write the grants. I write the letters of support from state leaders, get them on letterhead, get them scanned. I have compelling attachments to make your grant stand out in the crowd, to get it funded.
Good. Okay, great.
I have a, I have a couple of questions. Sorry. So my first question is, there's no way, and maybe it's jumping ahead, but what does your fee structure look like? Is it a percentage of per grant or, like, how do you get paid?
Sure. Vice President, for state and federal grants, a success fee is prohibitive. So I, I can't charge a percent. It's actually a monthly retainer. That's inclusive of all expenses. Wednesday, I'm going down to Washington, D.C., meeting with Senator Whitehouse's office and Senator Reed's about funding that's coming, becoming available this year, talking about my clients and their priorities. My monthly retainer includes all expenses, travel, business travel.
Okay. Yeah. So first of all, I, I actually agree with, you know, Councilwoman Bureau God too, that, you know, I know when I was on the Budget Committee last year, we presented that a grant writer would be great. We know that the return on investment would practically cover itself. And so I think it's long overdue that this town has a grant writer. I know we've heard for a long time that, you know, there always seemed to be some opposition for it because no one knows the town better than the people that work here. And while I wholeheartedly agree, we should be, those people are stretched thin, as we've heard numerous times as well. And so I think this is a great idea. The only thing I would like to know is, and this is more probably long-term planning, is we have short-term priorities, but we don't know what our longer-term priorities necessarily are. And I looked at some of your, some of your grants, and they were tied to comprehensive plans and stuff like that. And I think maybe it's more planning, or maybe it's more the council with the administrator. We should have some of these conversations about planning and long-term planning, and what are the funding sources and mechanisms that we can do to achieve those. So, yeah, I, I'm in agreement. I would like to know a little bit more about what your retainer is. I don't know if that's tonight or if that's later, but.
Would you like me to submit a proposal?
You can tell them what it.
Oh, my retainer for municipalities is five thousand a month retainer. And that's inclusive of all business travel and expenses. And, and, and candidly, the nature of political fundraising.
So is that already in our budget?
Not yet. But I'm certain that we could find out, defer to the finance director. I'm sure we could find five thousand dollars to retain, Ms. Samrose and Lisa, sorry. So if you wanted to start immediately, I'm pretty sure we could find five thousand dollars.
Okay. And I think we could. I just want to make sure, and I want to echo what Council Oger said, is that we're not just arbitrarily going out and getting grants because money is available. I think we have to have a game plan. I think we have to have a long-term plan. I think we have to have it be in sync with the comprehensive plan. So it would require, I think, you looking at that comprehensive plan, and then we prioritizing things as opposed to just, you know, going out and getting something. So.
So not the.
But at the same time, though, you want her to be able to, I know, I know we want to be able to identify stuff to tell her, but at the same time, you want her to tell us what's, like, we, there might be stuff on the radar that we don't even know about, where she could come up to us and say, hey, you know, there's something available for sidewalks, or something available for this, something available for street lighting. So it's got to work both ways.
Yeah, it's got to work both ways. But I think it has to be, it has to be something that we're all aware of. Because right now, I have to say, these grants that have come up, we weren't aware of them at all. We didn't have any idea that they were, you know, in the, in the works. So I think it's important that we have open communication. And I would like you to be able to, you know, once you're hired, to be able to look at the comprehensive plan and work with us to develop an overall plan and then plug things in too, right? And to, you know, to John's point, getting started early isn't a bad idea, because there may be something that's timely that we need to identify.
Abs, absolutely.
Yeah.
What I would do is actually work with a couple of designees, ask what the priorities are. And I can share with you, in the month of March, Senator Whitehouse has a, a grant, Congressional Direct Spending Grant Application that's due this Friday. Senator Reed's deadline was today. Congressman Cicilline has a deadline of the seventeenth of March. Rhode Island Commerce, they have two grant opportunities on March twenty-ninth. One is streetscape, so any areas where you want to do sidewalks, increase lighting, you want to do tree planting, I can send you that. With the Rhode Island Commerce, there's no match, which is wonderful. And then they also have a site readiness. So for any kind of engineering plans, prep work, any demolition, and those are in the month of March.
Lisa, was it three years, at least three years ago that we spoke, when I first contacted you through, you through your parents? At that time, you had mentioned different cities and towns, and I called them, and your name was well-known. And, but at that time, whatever happened, it fell between the cracks. And with the question of, you can't apply unless you need it, I don't think you would apply for anything that would just lay waste it.
Absolutely. What I would do is, I, I don't apply, first of all, not all grants have a match. For example, Rhode Island Foundation during COVID, they had funding for those individuals who are low to moderate or below poverty. They had food insecurity grants, they had rent relief, they had, you could purchase household items, Wi-Fi. So whatever the, the grant opportunity that's available, I would just put something in. It would be something that's thoughtfully discussed with the municipality, talk about the priority and submit it. But I, I remember that conversation, and I think.
It was long, very long.
Yeah. But, and I really appreciate, Councilwoman O'Hara, you reaching out to my parents. I think with COVID, a lot of things went off track.
Absolutely.
So the site readiness grant that you're talking about, is this something that could potentially help us with Hollowell? Like, is it something that's that big of? Like, is it something that's that big of a project?
Without question, yes.
And.
So that one in particular is up to, you can apply for 125,000, and then the streetscape is up to a half a million dollars. And there's no match on both of those.
Again, these sound great, and I think it's fabulous, and you have a stellar reputation, and I'm very happy that you're in front of us this evening. I still want to caution us not to just go out. A streetscape sounds fun and wonderful, and, you know, let's do something, but how, where, who's going to do it, what the operational cost of it? Just like, I think one of the things, the Multi-Generational Center, you're talking about site readiness now. I don't think we've had any engineering. I don't know, Administrator, have we had any engineering on that?
No.
So we're not anywhere near doing that. That would be fabulous for us to learn about, right?
Right, so engineering.
That wasn't included in the grant. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Engineering would be an allowable expense for that. But with the actual grants, it's something that's thoughtful. It's not just throw in an application. And so when you get grant money, all of my municipalities go out to procurement, and they hire someone to do it. So it's not like it's really a time drain or extensive time from the staff. And any assistance or guidance that they may need, you'll never hear from me, Councilwoman. It's not within my scope of responsibility because I don't need to work, but I love to work. It's a passion, and I think anyone who knows me, I put in 12, 14-hour days. I worked this past weekend, I love it. I absolutely love it, I thrive on it.
I know you can't, you know, nothing's guaranteed, but based on your experience, past practices, what would you say would be, I know this is, I'm throwing this out there, but would be, say, a minimum we could expect in grants for a fiscal year?
That's a great question. The return on investment's going to be there. I would say a minimum of a million dollars. I mean, if you look at my clients, what they received the last two years, they're all over 2, you know, 1.8, 2 million, 3.2 million.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just have one question. So all these towns that you've worked for, almost every single one of them, you've gotten a grant for the take-it-outside Rhode Island Commerce, and I think that was wonderful during that time. And unfortunately, we didn't have any part of that. So what kind of things did you get for the town? I mean, you got like North Providence, 100,000. Cranston, 250,000. Like, what kind of, what did they do, like, to, what did they do with this money to enhance the take-it-outside whole aspect?
What they did, what they all did, it was actually use it to support local businesses. So they actually had an application process. I created the application for them with their seal, with the questions that were in compliance with the US Treasury, because there were certain questions they had to answer. And what they did was actually, I put together a media release so they could send it out to the media, members of the media. And the application process would have a deadline. Then they formed a committee, they decided who to actually fund. And so it was businesses, they could use it, any business could use it for outdoor activity. Some of them did outdoor lighting, some of them did additional chairs and tables, some did heaters, some did outside signage. Everyone was different. Some did igloos, heated igloos.
Didn't Smithfield do a skating rink, or?
Yes, they did an ice skating rink.
That's great. Wow, that looks great.
No, you know what it is? And members of the council, you're all political. You're all in contact with state agencies, with elected officials, with congressional members. I actually keep in very, very close contact with key staff, and we're always sharing information on, you know, what do we expect this year? What's coming out relative to stormwater? What's coming out for road resurfacing? What's coming out for any kind of animal welfare? What's coming out for Wi-Fi? Your recreational fields, maybe things that aren't priorities, you're not thinking of. You have a lot of working parents who are actually at the athletic fields, so making them Wi-Fi, free Wi-Fi. So they can, when they're out there and they're watching games, they can access it. So it's just thinking out of the box.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. So I guess Administrator, can we ask the Finance Director through you that if we can, see if we can find any funding through the end of this year till the budget cycle? Or?
We have money in this fiscal year that would cover her fee for four months if you were to hire her this month.
Lisa, would you mind sending a proposal to the Administrator so he can send it to us and we can review it? And then the next meeting, we can vote on whether to accept it and have the Administrator sign it? All right, thank you so much.
I have one more thing, Madam President. I still think it comes back to kind of what also Councilwoman Hamilton was saying, is, you know, we need to, I think, plan better, long-term plan. You know, I know the last few Budget Committees have talked about long-term budgeting as well. You know, I think, you know, it's great that there's all these opportunities, and we may not know of every grant that's out there, but we also don't know exactly every project that we may or may not want to do. And there is a budget that should be attached to every project, and we should be looking at how much revenue from a grant can come in. How much revenue do we feel comfortable as a town putting in? Or can we put in with all these big projects that are also coming up? But also, what's the potential built-in expense or operating expense? And if any grant can cover some of that? Or do we even have the capability to fund those types of expenses long-term? You know, like building maintenance and other stuff. It may, it may look good to just do something, but to make it sustainable is also important. And so I don't know if you, who helps set the priorities with you? I know you said you work in close contact with the Council President, I think, in Cranston. Is it like a council-administrator-type relationship? Is it, do we kind of sit here and plan and say, these are some of the priorities? And if you hear anything else, let us know? Like, and do you report back to the council in terms of grants and expenditures?
That's a great, that's a great question. So in Cranston, I'm a direct report to the President of the City Council, but it's the mayor who actually has to sign and consent to the application submission. So I need to get his signature. And so sometimes that's a delicate position, quite candidly. So I have to be like Switzerland, work with the mayor and the president. And so they're always in agreement on what the priorities are, always in agreement. And so I would suggest, if you have certain priorities that are really important, to direct them to the President and to the Administrator. Recreation, storm, there's going to be funding for stormwater. One thing I would strongly encourage you to apply for, and I have done applications for other municipalities, there is over 500 million dollars coming to Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank for climate, the infrastructure bill, the federal infrastructure bill. So that's for climate resiliency. So anything with stormwater, flooding, road resurfacing, any kind of runoff, aging infrastructure, there's a lot of priorities there. But you have to actually put in an application, a municipality would have to put in an application, it's called MRP, Municipal Resilient Participant. They just want to know that you've given thoughtful thought in the comprehensive plan or the hazard mitigation plan to climate resiliency. And so you apply, and you get like credentialed to apply for those resiliency grants. Separate from that, they have additional opportunities for municipalities who don't apply to be MRP. But that would be a huge, I mean, I think of that, I mean, there's a lot of, there's millions of dollars that's going to come through that.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'm just going to be proactive here. Oh, it's not for you, sorry. I'm just going to be proactive and extend the minute, the meeting for an hour. I don't, I'm just not, I don't want to do it multiple times.
You're all set.
You're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
So I made a motion to extend the meeting for an hour.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Jeff, you ready? Discussion by Councilwoman, other action of Hollowell Review Committee, A, funding for master planning process, interviewing RFQ applicants, Amendment to Hollowell Review Committee Resolution to Include Oversight of Hollowell Master Plan, Amendment to Hollowell Review Committee Resolution to Suspend Monthly Required Meetings Until Further Notice by Council, and Removal of Buildings from Mr. B. R. Goddard.
How are we doing?
Good, how are you?
Not too bad. So not this past council meeting, but the one before that, I believe we had the discussion of, the Hollowell Committee is ready to move into master planning. We have our applications from our RFQ process that we've gone through, and we would like to know whether or not we should be moving forward. We are at kind of now a standstill. And our next steps are, you know, as we've recommended in the past, moving forward into a master plan and getting something on paper so that when we do go for a grant, we can actually get some money for it. Because as of right now, we just have our report of what we think as a committee that we should be doing, that we provided a few months ago to move forward. So we're essentially here just to say, are we moving forward or are we not?
I would like to see you move forward.
And I know it was said that there was going to be discussions with the Finance Director if there was going to be funding available. As I've said in the past, we are coming up on a, the new fiscal year. The new budget's going to be taking place in June and July. So even if we were to, I've always been holding steadfast to the 120,000 for the master planning fee as a baseline for negotiations with whatever architect and engineering firm that we may move forward with. But at this point, you know, we could certainly look to cut that in half for the next couple of months to sustain us until the budget season, and then you budget it for the next, in the next fiscal year. Honestly, the master planning process will probably be an eight-to-10-month process. So we, you know, if we are allowed to move forward with funding, and we can interview candidates, we probably likely won't get started until April or May, just based on contract negotiations, getting council approval, getting signatures on contracts, getting contracts. It's, it would probably be a little bit of a lengthy process just to, because we need to interview the firms first, too, and then make our recommendations to go into contractual negotiations, so.
Now, has the Hollowell Review Committee gone, have they done their budget yet? Or have they put their budget requirements or recommendations in?
We have put a recommendation in at the Planning Board Capital Improvements Process, which happened last Thursday. I was not able to attend myself, but our Secretary, Mr. Savini, was there in my stead, asking that that be recommended to the Budget Committee from the Planning Department.
And how much did you recommend?
We were, we're still asking for the full 120,000 in the event that we don't get any funding for this evening.
Okay. Did they have any conversation about that, or?
No, they were only taking in all the information, and they would make recommendations, but they did not consider that.
Isn't there money put aside for Hollowell that should be there?
There is money that remains with the bond from the school. I believe there is 384,000 that's left remaining. However, that has been held up with the statement that we need to use it for demolition of the buildings. We did use 75,000 of that for the Weston and Sampson Report, so I don't see why we have to hold up.
I don't either.
Our committee, when, you know, we do have to budget for a demolition of those buildings, but it sounds like there's a couple of different opportunities after tonight's discussion with the grant writer, so.
So do you think it might be worth, and I'm sorry, do you think it might be worth an opportunity just to, that we just hold off right now until we do contract with the grant writer? Because as tonight, like she was speaking, that there is stuff to get a site ready. You know, 125,000 engineering fees. So maybe this might be one of the first opportunities that we can go after a grant that could move this ahead a little bit?
So the only thing that I heard that concerned me was that she was talking about an open space grant. If it is the decision of this council to move, have us move forward with strictly open space, that's totally fine, that's your prerogative. But we have been recommending a master plan for the entire property. She did not mention architectural and design fees for that master plan. So I'm just, I'd like to hear a little bit more about what that grant entails. It also means that, I believe she had said that the end of the month is the deadline for that grant. I don't want to be keeping these architectural firms on the hook in saying, well, okay, we're, I told them in February, we're waiting for a council decision. Now we're here in, you know, almost middle of March. We're going to still be waiting for a council decision. And now, if we apply for that grant, it's obviously going to be a month of decision process, so now we're at the end of April. We're still waiting for a decision on this grant. So we've been waiting a very long time to move forward. We've been waiting since, you know, October of this past year. So it's, we're really at the point where, are we moving forward or are we not?
I just have a question. Are we moving forward or are we not?
I said just a little while ago that we could do.
But I think that question has to be posed to all of us and the residents of the town. What is it that we're going to do with that piece of property? Do we want open space? Great ideas you came up with a couple of meetings ago? Do we want to put something else on there? Do we want to preserve it for a future? I mean, you know, with everything you've done, you've been given directives from so many people. And I think that the original directive may have been to put the senior center there, put a community center there, put an edifice of some type there, correct? I can't tell you right now, if you ask me, I could have, pull my fingernails out. I couldn't tell you right now what we think, what the Administrator thinks, what DPW thinks, Parks and Rec thinks about, like, we all have ideas, and I think we all want what's best for the town. I don't think there's any one of us that thinks, you know, that, you know, we have any ulterior motive. We're all here, we're exhausted, we're all tired, like you guys, and we appreciate you being here and all the hours of work that you do. But honestly, if, you know, as a person just coming in in December, I can't tell you, if you ask me right now, so what is the plan for that property?
Excuse me, Mr. Porter. If I understood, when we were talking about plans, you can start off with said plans, but it doesn't mean it's in stone, am I right?
That's correct.
And that adjustments can be made.
Right.
So there should be no reason why we can't get started.
So Mrs. Hamilton.
What are we getting started on?
To, to address, Scouter's Hall is the big elephant in the room right now.
Right, right.
And I think, from my perspective here, with the project and the funding that we've gotten at Scouter's Hall, we're addressing a need that's right now. Scouter's Hall is a right-now need for this expansion of space for scouts and seniors. Multi-Generational Center, I'm going to say it on the record, we coined that in the Hollowell Review Committee. So that's a term that we started with. We started that before Scouter's was even a thing. Scouter's is addressing a right-now need. Hollowell will be addressing a long-term need. Hollowell is going, has always been envisioned as a place, not only for North Smithfield residents to go to, but also for Northern Rhode Island residents to go to. It's going to be not only a place for seniors, a place for community garden, for interaction and collaboration with folks that are, that have grown produce in the community garden, they bring that to the seniors. There's cooking classes, because we have a commercial kitchen in that location.
So may I interrupt you just for a second? So if you're going to get a master plan, right? And I'm just asking because I think people just don't understand what a master plan is. What are you going to be asking this master planning process to produce for you at the end of the 120,000?
So think of the master plan as a narrow version of the comprehensive plan for that parcel of property. It's going to identify what can happen in the next five years. It's going to identify what can happen in the next 10 years, in the next 20, 15, 20 years, however long we want to pose this out. Along with that, if that open space is going to be in the first five years, we get a construction estimate to tell us, with escalation, how much that's going to be. So then that way, in budgeting, grant writing, whatever, bonding. So, then that way, in budgeting, grant writing, whatever, bonding, we know how much that's going to be, and we can set that money aside. In the 10-years plan, after Phase Two, Phase Three, whatever that is, we still have a concrete idea of what those next steps are going to cost. And if the council at that time decides to continue with it, great. If they decide to put it off for another year or two, then there's some adjustments there that get made. We've worked on, I've worked on master plans that have started in the 1980s, before I was born. And I don't mean to make anybody feel old with that statement.
You just did.
They were done in the early 1980s. I have revised them in the mid-2000s, late, you know, in the past five, six years. So, master plans are the roadmap of where you want to go, but you can always make the revisions to suit whatever the town, because the town may change drastically in the next 15 years. The priorities might change. So, they might come and say, okay, well, we have this master plan with Phases One through Five. We actually want to get Phase Four done now because that's going to, Phase Four has the robotics lab, and we want to become the next tech giant in Northern Rhode Island. So, that's where we're going to pull our priority and put that ahead of the other ones. And these are just all of the many examples that we have gotten during the charrette that we held with Weston and Sampson, what, through the surveys that we've done, through talking with community members. We had a pumpkin fest booth. So, we have all, this is not just nine people all sitting together thinking, oh, this would be good, oh, this would be good. No, it's been, all of these reports and recommendations have been based off of what we've heard from the community.
Jeff, just a couple of things. First of all, I wish I had a spot for my business for a guy like you. I would hire you in a second. You're a squared-away, passionate guy. I just disagree with you on a couple of issues. When we went out two years ago for Weston and Sampson, that was like $60-something thousand. If we were to go out for Weston and Sampson, and you would have said, well, we want this Weston and Sampson report for $60-something thousand, and then when we're done, we're going to need another $120,000, we probably wouldn't have gone for it, right? So, we did Weston and Sampson. We needed Weston and Sampson. Now, we need this. You know what I mean? It's just like, well, I never would have agreed to the $60,000 for Weston and Sampson if you said, well, once we're done with them, we're going to need another $120,000. So, that's just, that's just one issue. The other issue I have is, as long as those buildings are up, nothing's happening down there.
I completely agree.
So, I think that we should, my opinion is that we should hold off on doing anything until those buildings are down.
So, then you need to put us on hold. If we're not going to, if we're not doing anything until those buildings are downed, tell us we have to wait.
I agree.
Okay? That's the bottom line, because Ray's going to come up here in a minute and say...
No, he's not going to, he's not coming up.
Ray's going to come up here in a minute and say the same thing he said every time after I talk, that those buildings first and foremost need to come down.
But I had one more point to make.
Okay.
What Ms. Hamilton was saying. The buildings are still up, they got to come down.
I agree.
And secondly, we don't even all agree on what we want to do down there. So, I think if we should get the buildings down, have a vision that we all agree on that we want to do, what we want down there, and then we go forward with the plan.
Have you read our report?
Yes, I did.
Have you read it recently?
As a matter of fact, I read, I went through and I read all these, all these reports with the architects.
Do you recall the Weston and Sampson Report?
Yes.
Do you remember the next steps memo that they included with their report? What was their next steps that they put in?
Instead of quizzing me, just...
No, I'm serious. The next step that Weston and Sampson recommended to us after their land use and assessment of the buildings was to go into a master plan. That was their recommendation, which our recommendation echoed. So, while I completely agree with you that those buildings need to come down, we've been waiting a year and a half since our last recommendation to do it. And the fact of the matter is, you can do two things at once. We have one committee that can do the master planning. We have a Director of DPW that can put out an RFP for demolition, and they can move forward at the same time. Why do we have to wait when we've already given out so much time for the buildings to come down, which we've recommended a year and a half ago to do? And nothing has been done. So, I hope you can understand my frustration.
I do.
Because we're told, almost at every other meeting, we can't move forward because the buildings are still there. Well, guess what? In December 21st, 2021, we wrote a letter to this, the previous council, to take down those buildings. So, if we're going to be talking about funding for Hallwell, I would request then you put forth the full 1.2 million that's being estimated to take down the buildings for hazardous materials and demolition, and do that, so then that way we can get moving.
Can I say something? So, I agree, I think everyone agrees. Those buildings need to come down. That conversation has been going on, like other conversations in town, for long enough. I think, I think Hallwell should be allowed to move forward. And the reason why I'm saying that is, two years ago, this council, well, not, I wasn't on the council, but the council at the time prioritized Hallwell. They prioritized the idea of a senior center. They prioritized the idea of a multi-generational center. And it was the thing that everyone seemed to want to rally around at, you know, at that point in time in 2020. And I agree that we've spent a lot of money so far on it. You know, I think it comes back to, again, that we don't have good, long-term planning right now. You know, all these things, these additional expenses, we've never actually set a long, I'm just speaking generally, I'm not speaking about anybody. But I haven't seen any budget, even going back to when I was on the Budget Committee, of what does a budget for Hallwell look like? What are the different phases? What is the different expenditures? And I know they're variable, and they could change depending on the firms you contract, et cetera. But we also have a history in town of not acknowledging or recognizing committees for the work that they do. You know, going back to the Conservation Commission of a few years and others, budget committees, we've heard that they sit in the corner, and we don't listen to them. And, you know, Jeff, you got up here and you spoke about how much time, if we were contracting out, that this town would be paying. And the reality is, is both can happen. We do have the money. We have money, I said at the last meeting, in the unrestricted account, that if we deem that the liability is large enough, we could borrow some. We know that we're probably running a surplus again this year, and we could move some of that money back over to cover that loss as a short-term loan. We just need to get creative in how we think and how we problem solve. And I think, I don't see a reason why maybe you guys could move forward in the interview process, knowing that we're coming at the end of our fiscal year. And when it gets to a point of funding, you know, who's to say we have to pay the $120,000 at once? Maybe we pay a little bit now, and we pay later on, or maybe the firm is willing to work with us. Or maybe by the time we actually get through the interview process, now there's a grant available to cover the cost, and, you know, there's no money that we have to pay upfront. But I just, I don't think we should shut them down just because we don't, we don't know what's exactly next. I think then if that's the case, we should have a meeting with them again, especially since there's new members on the council, and reprioritize what is the long-term plan for that site. Because if it is open space, there's going to probably be some engineering costs at someplace. You're going to probably want to put a bathroom or two down there, or something, running water or something for residents. Please, no commentary. And we just don't know what that looks like. You know, in other communities, you go to a soccer field, and they have a little restroom there, you know, or a place where, you know, a place where you can go, like, you know. Smithfield just put in a successful dog park. A lot of it was privately funded raise. We'd never have those types of conversations. We're saying it's all-town money, but we've never actually had additional conversations like that. So, I just don't think we should be so quick to write them off, and I think that we should seriously consider them moving forward.
And I'm not saying we should write them off. I wanted to just have an explanation on the record for people that, you know, probably didn't understand the concept of master plan and how it can be concurrent with other things that are going on. I think that's the important thing. It doesn't have to be exclusively one or the other. So, I agree with you 100%, and I don't know if anybody else does, that taking down those buildings is like
Absolutely.
Job one, as they say, right? I would even, I would even move that we authorize funds to be taken out of the restricted fund right now.
That's funny, I brought that up last meeting.
Okay, well, let me take credit for it then. No, my case. I would, I would think that we're in agreement with that, right? That we should just take funds, and whatever the cost is for the removal of those buildings, do them right, get it done, finish it up. And as you said, Jeff, maybe the $60,000 in this year's budget can get you going on, you know, getting some of those people in, you know, interview process at the very least.
Sure. So, I also wanted to speak a little bit as well, hearing that the grant writer is here. Fantastic idea. $5,000 retainer for the next four months is $20,000. We've been, I've been here before you guys basically begging for money almost every other meeting. And then, oh, great, we got a great writer, let's give her the money. Well, you have a nine-member board that has been here for two and a half years that has been asking since, you know, July, August, September, saying that we're going to be going into the master planning process, and we'd like to have some funding set aside. So, I hope you guys understand the frustration that we continually hear. So, I'm hoping that, well, yes, we can do demolition, but we're two different groups here
Right.
That can do demolition and one that can do master planning.
Then you put money aside and give both what they need.
Jeff, just a quick question. You're the engineer, you tell me. I know that President Alves has mentioned she'd like to see an ice rink down there. I said I'd like to see like a splash pad or pickleball courts. Do you need a master plan to put those things down there?
You don't. You need an engineer to do it, though, and it's going to cost just as much to do that. So, why not do this, do it the right way? Do the master plan of the entire property. So, then that way, five years down the road, we don't have to tear up that splash pad. We don't have to tear up that ice rink. It's already set in stone where it's going to be. So, now that zone is off limits to put whatever is put next, school, library, whatever is decided to get down there.
So, it's basically going to layer in each group so that
Yep.
Everything remains intact, and we're not totally
Exactly.
Moving things around, okay.
It eliminates the need to remove things that you spent money on
To put it there in the first place.
To put something else there.
So, should we, should we decide to at least come up with half the money tonight? Could we schedule another joint meeting because there are new council members?
Sure.
And so that we can kind of, because I agree, you've been thrown in, you know, so many different directions. I know, and I think Mr. Bureau Goddard said the same thing, like, and I think you agree that there's probably not going to be a brick and mortar on that land
Not right away.
For many years, right?
No.
So, we need to find the best use for it now
Yep.
So that we can enjoy it now, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, like, like we were saying, like, the school can't hold cross-country meets at the, at school because they don't have the right land, right?
Sure.
So, here we have hills, and we have, you know, pretty big lots.
Yep.
So, maybe we could make sure we have a course so that we can hold cross-country meeting, uh, cross-country meets.
And then when we figure out that course, we can apply for one of the DEM grants that was just being mentioned.
Right. But I think we just all kind of need to be on, make sure we do understand that.
Sure.
I don't think anyone thinks there's a building being built, like, in the next couple of years.
Certainly not, because, because obviously, you know, the thing that kind of put through the wrench into our plans is the Scouters Hall thing. So, again, as I said, we're addressing, that's addressing a right-now need. The planner in me, being on the Planning Board, I'm looking 20 years out for what we're doing, because I'm not moving. My son has a lot of growing up to do. We need, we need some space that's going to be, you know, dedicated to that.
Right. And I hear your frustration with us talking about a grant writer, but I think the grant writer can help us move forward in a lot of other areas
Oh, certainly.
That we may be stuck in, because now we'll be able to have a future plan.
Yeah.
Or, you know, like a master plan of what we want to do with grants, so that we can give that to her.
And they'll be coordinated, right?
Right.
That's the thing, it's a coordination.
And I'm looking forward to having her join us at the Planning Board meeting, so we can introduce her to the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Which is actually...
I mean, there's a ton of open space here that she got, so that would be something that she could, you know, meet with the Hallwell Review Committee as her advisory
Yep.
To say, hey, this is what's coming up, and is this something we're interested in, in me going after? So, I think that's going to be a win-win for everyone.
I think so, too.
All right. Do I make a motion for $60,000 to be given to the Hallwell Committee this evening for half of the master plan, so that they can proceed with interviews and get this ball rolling?
I make a motion that we give the Hallwell Review Committee
It's a second.
Second, you're here. Yep.
Yeah, I was going to ask, what account, do we have, do we have the funds?
I second your idea.
Yes, we have it.
I'll second what, oh, so there's a second, our discussion.
So, she has it in the Hallwell.
So, but are we taking it from the bond? The $300,000?
I'd take it from the unrestricted fund.
Take, take it from the fund.
The fund balance, absolutely.
Okay. So then, okay, so 60 from...
Yep.
So, we're not touching the 384, right?
Not now.
Jerian?
Should we touch the 384?
Yeah. Jerian, we're not touching the 384, or, I mean, should we just use that and then...
We should use the 384.
That's what it's for.
And then we...
Well, it's not enough.
I didn't write the...
So, then, I don't know if we're informed enough to make a decision tonight, but can...
No, I think we're going to have to take money from the unrestricted fund.
But can we just do that tonight?
Either way, either if we make up the difference of what DPW needs for the removal of the thing, right?
What's the difference between a Weston Sampson
Exactly.
Report and a master plan?
Are you kidding?
I would say just take it out of the 380.
I think it's for professional fees.
And save the unrestricted if we want to do that for another conversation for demolition.
And then we can use unrestricted for demolition, should we need to go that route. Is that okay?
I don't know what the bond was. I don't know the wording in that.
She's right.
If we took it for Weston and Sampson, then...
Professional service.
It's professional, yeah.
The bond, the bond wording was for decommissioning.
That's right.
Decommissioning includes engineering services and demolition.
So, master plan would be included?
Yes.
And I'd say we do that.
Yeah.
Take it from the money that was reserved for.
Yeah. So, can we go through that?
You might want to have that confirmed. You might want to make your vote contingent on confirmation that it doesn't violate terms and conditions of the bond.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's a very good point, because decommissioning, to me, sounds like decommissioning, and doesn't sound like planning ahead. So, I'm just, that's why I'm suggesting we have millions of dollars in the unrestricted fund right now. This is a very good use. It's not restricted. We don't have to worry about wording. Given the $60,000, then we can use this for decommissioning.
So, you made the motion, is that how you want the motion?
I'm making a motion, yes.
All right.
Still.
And who's second?
Second.
All right, discussion. If I vote yes on this, it's going to be because I have all the respect in the world for the Hallwell Committee, Jeff's passionate, I have a lot of respect for him, and that's not a good reason to vote yes. I'm still going to vote no on the, I'm still going to vote no on this, because I don't think we're at the point yet where we're ready. We don't even agree on what we want to do, the buildings are still there. I said put this on hold for now and then revisit it when we're ready to go forward.
But John, those buildings have to come down, they're dangerous. Nothing good can come out of having them standing.
Yeah, but this has nothing to do with the buildings coming down, it has to do with what we're going to do once they are down.
I know what the master plan is, but you can't, you can work on a master plan and still take those buildings down. Am I right? Two different things.
That's very correct, we're working in parallel paths.
And like you said, this won't be done until April or May, right?
Negotiate, you know, we're going to need to schedule interviews with the two firms that have applied, score them accordingly, make our recommendation to the council that they move forward with contract negotiations based on our RFQ and interactions with them. And then it's going to be, you know, the solicitor and the administrator, and you can certainly use me as a tool for those contract negotiations and, you know, move that forward. So it's, yeah, probably, you know, another month and a half, two months before we get fully moving on this.
And when do you think is a good time to start having joint meetings again so that we can all be on the same page?
Whenever you would like, we could.
I mean, I'm asking you, when's the best time to start doing that? Is it going to be after or now?
So what I might recommend is that we get a firm on board so they can be part of those discussions. They hear the conversation between the Hallowell Board, the council's concerns. They'll have the time to read the Weston Sampson report, they'll have time to read our report that we presented to you quite a while back. And if anybody does not have that information, just let me know, I can send you the drive link so that you do have it and are able to read it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I do want to say thank you for the support and the appreciation. It does not go unnoticed and we're happy to hear that we're going to start moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've done along with the committee. I mean, I know there's a lot of hours, I know it's been frustrating, but thank you.
And not everybody will be happy, but we're moving, we're taking some action.
So I just have a clarifying question. So we're moving the money from the unrestricted, is that what we, is that what your motion was for?
That was her motion.
Okay.
So it's not to delay further by having to look at language.
Something like, Jerian, do we need to do like any type of other action with it? We can just say we're grabbing 60K from the unrestricted?
Can you talk into the mic, please?
I had asked a few weeks ago our auditor the proper way to do it, so I have it written down. I don't remember exactly what it is, I can pull it up, but there's a way to do it correctly if you're going to spend that.
So can we, do we have to? I want to make sure this is done procedurally correct, too. I just don't want us to grab 60K and then find out we did it wrong and then next meeting we're coming back and redoing it.
Yeah, so are you going to have to do it the next meeting, we have to change the description?
That's why I think the contingency would be the easier way if we want to do it tonight.
And then if we have to transfer it over.
Then if we have to transfer. Because if not, I would say then it would be that we would be looking to do it at the next meeting to make the money transfer.
No, we have to do something tonight.
Then I think if we had to do something tonight to clean this option to bond.
I found a description on how to do it. It says, "For one-time expenditure in the general fund, the council would approve a budget amendment authorizing the use of fund balance in fiscal '23 and increase the related expenditure line item."
So can we do that tonight?
So basically the opposite of when we were doing fund balance restoration. So it would use up instead.
So my follow-up question is, David, does that have to be a separate line item on the agenda? That people have to know we're going to move money from the unassigned fund balance?
I don't have the answer for that, I mean, it sounds like you do, I'm not in order.
I think we have to.
So it's definitely going to be done, it's in the minutes, but we just have to figure out procedurally and if we have to just do a roll call vote on it next meeting, we'll do that.
Well, it's out there, though, the vote and the motion has been made.
Right, we'll do pending clarification on the transfer of the funds, right?
I don't think we can.
You might have to amend the budget.
You do.
Add a line item, that's what I'm gathering, but again, you know, this is awful spontaneous, there's no preparation here.
I think you have to do two actions. You have to change the line item and then you have to vote to authorize it. I don't think you can just say we're going to use it tonight for 60K. I think you can say in principle we're going forward, we're going to do it. But I think it brings up the other question that if we're going to use any of that money for demolition, we should just do this as one shot. We shouldn't be doing this like we're going to dip in, dip out type situation.
We could just stick to the original thing when we said and take it from the three something, 300 and something thousand and then do that instead for now.
If it's not contingent, then we can revisit it next meeting.
The more I'm thinking about this and the more I'm listening, it's clear to me that you have to put an agenda item that says you're amending the last year's budget. I think you have to say you're amending the budget to add a line item for X and funding it from Y. That's what I think and that, you know, people should know that that's what you're doing.
So we can make the motion that we would move forward, but we have to wait pending the approval?
Yeah, I just, I think you need to get an in-line item, I need to get an agenda item. There's nothing on this agenda that talks about funding anything. And so I don't think anybody in the public is aware of that. I mean, I think that's the ultimate problem.
The one thing that is on the agenda is.
I don't read that as we're going to move money from the.
I didn't see it as amending the budget.
Yeah, I don't see it as that either, that's why I want to make sure procedurally.
If you don't already have a line item.
But we can't fund it from the budget right now as an unrestricted, that's the issue. It's like when we've done other agenda items to transfer money in and out, we just can't dip it, take the money out just because it's there.
I will rescind my original motion. And I will make a new motion stating that we'll provide $60,000 to the Hallowell Review Committee for a master plan from Bond.
So she has to rescind her second.
Second.
And now there has to be a new second.
If it doesn't violate the bond.
Right, well, contingent upon.
Contingent upon, all right, contingent upon determining proper language and the use of that funds, those funds are allowable uses.
I rescind my first second and I grabbed it. And I second her second motion.
Are we good? Joanne?
I think it sounds good. That's what it said.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
So I have a second.
Madam President, was the first motion withdrawn?
Yeah, and the second was withdrawn as well, and then we, Claire and I both, we seconded. So I guess if it's not contingent, David, then the expectation is we'll just put it an agenda item going forward.
Okay, no further discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
No.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
One other procedure, some, while we're talking procedure, could we have, and because they're on the agenda, could we also have a motion to approve the Hallowell Review Committee moving forward with interviewing of the applicants? And as another motion that needs to be made is that we need to amend our resolution to have the oversight of the master plan because that is not currently in the resolution as written.
So when you say oversight, what do you mean by oversight? I know what oversight is, but.
Yeah, that we would be the body that works with the consultant. It was similar to when the Weston Sampson contract was put into place.
Still in like advisory capacity.
So we would still be working in an advisory capacity, but we would be working with the consultant for master planning.
Thank you.
Want to put that into a motion?
So I think to do that, we would need to have David amend the motion, amend the resolution, it's getting late, amend the resolution and then we would vote on the resolution the next meeting. I think that's the cleanest way to do that.
If the court can get clear on what that is, then we need to know exactly what that's going to be. You're adding additional authority to the Hallowell Committee, I understand what's going on.
Just to have oversight of the master plan.
So right now, you wouldn't have that authority, you wouldn't have that ability to work with the?
No, we, our resolution, that might take me a few minutes to pull it up, but it does not include oversight of consultant for master planning services.
That should be in the master plan.
Well, that should be in our resolution, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so oversight would be working with them, following up on anything that they recommend, reporting back here to the council.
Having regular meetings with them.
Meetings with them as you move along, okay. Is that sufficient for?
Well, I think what's going to have to happen is that that information, if that's what you want to have, we have to present an amended resolution at the next meeting.
Yes, not now, right, right, no, that's what we're saying, but does that give you enough information to? Provide an amendment? Okay.
I'm hearing oversight.
So what did, did you have to amend the resolution for Weston and Sampson?
No, because the resolution was written when, prior to Weston and Sampson's contract, or, after Weston and Sampson was contracted. Weston and Sampson was contracted first, then the Hallowell Review Committee was formed by a resolution of the council and then that's how the wording worked out. So I'm just wanting to make sure that we, if there's some procedural stuff that needs to happen so that we include the master planning, fine, if not, we're good to go. But I just want to make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is.
Okay.
Okay, so that will be done at the next meeting, hopefully, as soon as possible.
Mr. Igliozzi and Madam Clerk, if there's any wording that you'd like to, any assistance with, I'd be more than happy to send that along.
That'd be great.
All right, so you can knock that other agenda item off with the hiatus for committee meetings, then.
Wonderful.
Exactly. Okay, will we have that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated.
Thanks, Jeff. Mr. Bureau God, removal of buildings?
Madam President, can I? Give up my spot for Senator De La Cruz to come up and then we'll jump back to my.
New business discussion by council vote on other action on support for House Bill H5642 and Senate Bill S0076, which seeks to lower the state sales tax from 7% to 5%.
Senator, thanks for coming out tonight, sorry for the delay.
I'm used to long nights, so. State House, town councils, it's that time of year.
So when I read about your proposal, I thought it was a good opportunity if the council was interested in, seeing if the council was interested in showing support behind you and supporting this bill. So if you can just explain a little bit about it, that'd be great.
Absolutely. So one of the things that my colleagues and I had tried to, over the break, how can we bring relief to Rhode Islanders and how can we bring relief to all Rhode Islanders? And not picking and choosing, you know, there were some nice initiatives by the governor, like, you know, a tax credit for every child that you have, but how can we help everybody, not just certain segments of the population? And one of the, one of the things that we thought, among many, was reducing the sales tax to 5%. We currently have 7, Massachusetts has 6.25, Connecticut has 6.35, and out of all the New England states, we're the highest and there's only one state that has zero, but we're not going to compete with New Hampshire. What, I think all of us have, at one point or another, crossed the border to Massachusetts to buy goods. I lived in East Providence, moved to North Smithfield years ago, but I remember my family going to Seaconk for gasoline and then they would stay there because they were going to go out to eat and they were going to purchase other goods there in Massachusetts. And so what we aim to do with this legislation is to keep Rhode Islanders in Rhode Island, but then also entice Massachusetts residents and Connecticut residents to come to Rhode Island and spend their money here. I don't think that anyone's going to change their spending habits for a quarter percent. If we lower it to 6% and Massachusetts is still 6.25, is someone going to drive out of their way to come to Rhode Island? Probably not. But for 6%, to 5%, excuse me, I think that they would. I would, and I know a lot of people have expressed support for this legislation. It's not unusual for towns to support legislation. I see resolutions come in all the time for various pieces of legislation, from taxation to social issues. So when Senator Bureau God, maybe someday, when Councilman Bureau God reached out, I said, yeah, absolutely, we'd love to come and talk to the council, answer any questions that you may have.
So I have a quick question.
Absolutely.
So I think most people would agree that, you know, lowering the sales taxes, you know, people would think it's great. What's offsetting the loss in the sales tax? Like, where's the offset revenue going to come from? Is it purely volume in that more people are going to buy more goods and services? Or is there other offsetting revenue that's going to make up for the loss from 7 to 5 or 6 to 5%?
Sure, so there's a couple of things. So what we want to do is use the surplus because I think we've taken the wrong premise. You know, this money belongs to Rhode Islanders. The government is not in the business of profits. They're not a Walmart or a Target and they're looking at what their last quarter numbers were. The government took too much and now they need to give it back. We would be looking at, yes, to your question. I lost my train of thought, what was your other question? You said?
What's the offsetting revenue for the decrease from, I think it's 6 to 5%?
Yes.
Because you're going to have lost revenue there.
Yep, absolutely. That would be from having people from Massachusetts, Connecticut, and then Rhode Islanders come shop in Rhode Island. Also, we need to take into account that the costs of goods have increased. So even the dollar store is at $1.25, so the cost of goods gone up, so the taxation on those costs, on the cost of goods have also increased. So that would be a factor as well.
And the total amount annually?
Annually would be, according to the Senate Fiscal Office, can be anywhere from 400 to 450 million.
Okay, and the premise then would be to provide reimbursement to the state based on future sales, future potential sales?
Right.
Okay.
What is that, did you ever calculate estimate what that would be per family? How much each family would save if we lowered the sales tax?
Yeah, so we're going to do apples-to-apples comparison. I did not have a crystal ball when I crafted my state-of-the-state response, but the governor did mention that he wanted to save 0.15% on the sales tax to families. And his office came out with a number that it would save families $39 a year, which I, I'm not going to make fun of a tax cut because I love tax cuts, even if they're small, large. So, but I just think it's too small. And so apples-to-apples comparison, this bill would be $1,100 in savings to families.
So when you mentioned you wanted to take surplus, you'd take the 400 million out of surplus?
Right.
And then hope that there would be future revenue generated from potential sales?
Right.
Okay.
Hope is maybe not the best word, but yeah.
Okay, well, assume that that would happen, or that's the premise, right? Okay, so the 400 million, that's an annual figure?
Yes.
Okay. And do you feel confident that we will always have a surplus to the extent that we have right now?
It wouldn't be surplus. We're not always going to have a surplus. And the money would be recouped by keeping Rhode Islanders in Rhode Island and having neighboring states, not neighboring states, our neighbors in neighboring states come shop in Rhode Island from Connecticut and Massachusetts.
Can I ask another quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, one, is it possible to get a full copy before I support a resolution?
Absolutely.
I only have like pieces of it. And second of all, is this also, and maybe it's in the bill and I just don't have it, is it applied to online sales as well?
Yes. All sales, so anything that's taxed, in brick and mortar and online.
Thank you.
There's another aspect of this that I mentioned to you before in my book. Back in 1990, we had the banking crisis and the state government added an extra 1% on there to pay back, to make all the people who lost money in the credit union crisis whole. They said once everybody's whole and once that's paid back, we'd get back that, they'd take that 1% sales tax back.
Don't hold it back?
And they never did. So that, RISD has been, the RISD bill has been paid back for many years now and they never took that 1% back. So to me, this is just another layer on top of this as a reason to support.
That's a great point. Whenever there's a temporary tax or temporary government program, run for the hills, it's never temporary, it's always permanent. And I think we owe it to Rhode Islanders to at least, you know, if my colleagues come back and say, Jessica, we think 6% is reasonable, guess what? I'm going to take that and we take it as a win and I'm going to say, yeah, absolutely. And I think that reasoning alone is enough to say, yeah, we owe it to Rhode Islanders, we gave them our word. We're going to be people of integrity, 6% it is, so. I think it's doable and that's why we put a lot of thought and research into it. But always ready and willing to come to the table with my colleagues in the Senate and even in the House to come to a compromise if necessary.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming back, of course.
All right, John, did you want to go back to the removal of buildings under?
Well, you're not ready, you wouldn't like me to take, make a motion to support the Senate bill? Oh, we have to create a resolution, right, before we can support? Oh, so you want to do a motion to have David craft? I got you now.
Mr. Igliozzi, well, first of all, I would like to make a motion to ask Mr. Igliozzi to go forward and craft the resolution in support of, it's House Bill H5642 and Senate Bill 0076.
I'd like to second that motion, please.
And for discussion, if we can get a copy of the bill, that would be great, just to see what we would be supporting.
So we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
No.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
No. Okay, back to old business, E, did you want to?
Yes, please.
Removal buildings for the Hallowell?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Madam President. Back in last year's Budget Committee, I mentioned that, I mentioned the, not the Budget Committee, last year's Budget Discussions, I had mentioned the idea of taking money from the unassigned fund balance and putting it towards removal of the buildings with the agreement that we would then budget money to replace that in the fund balance. And the logic there was if we take a million dollars out and we try to, if we have to budget for a million dollars to take those buildings down, it's going to affect the levy and it's going to affect people's taxes, where if we.
Where if we take money from the unassigned fund balance and we replace it as neat, say, over the course of whatever, five or 10 years, it won't have an effect on the levy, it's something that we can budget in to the, you know, we, we can budget in. And I also spoke to Ellen, who was before the council last week, about who was a bond counsel. She thought it was a very valid idea and she actually liked the idea. I asked Steve, is it Marconi? Masaroni, I can't even read my own writing. Anyway, he actually liked the idea and he, I asked him if that, taking money out of there to do that would affect our bond rating. Because as you know, we're going to be needing, possibly needing to go to bond fairly soon. He said, if you take money out to shore up a budget deficit, then it shows that you're not doing a good job and it would affect your bond rating. But if you take money out for a one-time expenditure or something like this, it won't affect your bond rating. And the fact that you're going to commit to putting it back would even pretty much guarantee that you're not going to, you know, it's not going to affect your bond rating. So that was, that was critical as far as taking, tapping into that fund to do this. Now also, that also allows us to go out really immediately, instead of waiting for the next budget, you know, to budget the money, it really allows us to go out immediately and get the estimates and get moving on this instead of waiting till, you know, July to do that. Jerry Ann, I spoke to you about this at length and you want to give your opinion on, on this idea that we discussed?
Sorry. I think it's a good idea as well because it's a one-time purchase. I also spoke with Steve Masaroni, our financial advisor about it and what, all the same things you said, he told me. So this sounds like the proper use of unassigned fund balance for a one-time purpose. And he told me that he, it shouldn't affect our Moody rating at all either.
And to go out and budget a million dollars to do this, or take out a bond, which wouldn't, now we're paying that for the next however many years, we can do this, it's like taking an interest-free loan from ourselves and we can commit to paying it back every budget cycle, just agreeing that we're going to put X amount of money to pay back that, that loan that we took basically from ourselves. So that's my thoughts on that, to get that job done and get it rolling right away.
So that, again, I apologize for not knowing coming in the last couple of months, the three eighty-four from that school bond, the demolition, is that?
That's a bond.
Can we use any of that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we could use that.
It won't be a million. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
You're right.
Okay.
So are you looking for any motion or?
Well, if there's any, anybody has any thoughts on it, first of all. And secondly, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion at, once everybody's done talking, I'll make a motion to, to go that route.
Yeah, I think it's, it's in keeping with what we've been trying to do is move some things along and not just kick the can down the road all, all the time. And if indeed the, the language allows for the use of that, three eighty-four for demolition, then I think, you know, we add it, we'd get seven hundred thousand and then move on that piece of property and move with the master plan and get that skating rink in there.
Instead of waiting, instead of waiting till July to get moving, we can get moving immediately.
I, if I may, I agree a hundred percent. You know, I said, I asked the auditors, could we, do we have enough money to use at the last meeting? And unbeknownst, you had said it a year ago. The only question I had was the percentage of the fund balance, what would that percentage look like? I know we're well over and we have the fund balance ordinance, so by nature, if we dip below sixty percent.
We have eight million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in that account right now.
Right. No, I'm saying, I agree with you how much we have. I'm saying by nature, we already have a built-in mechanism to replenish the account because we have to be between twelve and sixteen percent by ordinance. So we would have the ability to pay it back. But I agree, I think it's a perfect use for it. I think the liability of keeping those buildings up probably far exceeds the cost of taking them down. So I'm totally in support of it.
Yep, me too.
She's asking.
Oh, yes.
I just remembered one other thing. When I talked to the bond counsel, she said to make sure that we don't have any outstanding bonds currently that would have been related to Hallowell in any way. I haven't had a chance to look back. I'm assuming no.
No.
But she said to check to see if there were any of the like energy bonds that were done, if it included Hallowell. No, because I know we had one of those, but I don't know what building it's for.
It was for Town Hall.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
My, my only other proceed, I only have another procedural question is, can any one of us reach out to bond counsel? I don't even have their contact info. So if that's the case, I would like to have the contact info to our financial advisor and bond counsel. And yeah, we'll have to extend the meeting again, don't worry about. Just, I just, I just would like, not, it just would be good to know for, to consult with, you know?
If somebody gets hurt down there, we're going to wish it only cost us a million dollars.
I agree. That's what I was saying. Like, you know, you're probably talking a few million dollars if somebody gets hurt.
Again, this will have to be.
Next meeting.
An amendment to the budget, right?
Yeah.
So would I make a motion now or would just wait until?
Well, you, you can make a motion to propose an amendment to the budget. I guess you said removal of building, but ultimately it'd be an amendment, the amendment to the budget where you're creating a line item.
Can you talk into that?
Funded this, the demolition of Hallowell School with a.
Well, why don't I just have Joanne put that on the next agenda for vote?
Why don't we just put it, why don't we just, we got the gist, with the clerk and put that on? It's only going to be for discussion and you have to, you're going to have a discussion about it.
How much, I guess, is the other question? We still don't know the total cost. We just know ballpark, right?
Do we leave that open, that number, the final number open? Or should it be an exact?
I think you're going to have to, you're going to have to figure that out.
Yeah, not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Don't underbudget.
All right, Joanne, we'll, we'll figure out the language for the next agenda. Thank you.
All right, discussion by vote, counsel or other action, our peers at the North Smithfield Police Station, Mr. Chief Lafferty?
Before he starts, I'm going to make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven thirty.
What?
What?
It's already ten forty-four. I doubt we're getting out of here by a light. I just want to be realistic.
Could you speak quickly, Chief?
Yeah, this conversation is probably premature because we have a meeting on Thursday. But I just want to briefly just touch base with the council. As to, I know there's bond questions that are coming up, we have more conversations on Thursday. But regardless of what the outcome of any bond vote on whatever the council comes up with, I still need an amount of money to make small repairs to the station, meaning holes in the wall, plaster, paint, carpet repair, carpet installation, floor repair, and just the basic cleanliness of the department and broken windows, toilets that have frozen and broke. This has all been held off because of all the conversations and the money that is in the bond and what are you going to use it for? We do still have major structural repairs that will probably eat up most of the money. And I know some of the money still needs to be spent on this building. I don't think they're, they're done with repairs here. But in any event, whether, I don't, we, we had conversations about capital improvements and going through the capital part of the budget as far as any small construction repairs or cosmetic repairs that need to be done. But just, just for the, you know, to be proud of the, the station and the rank and file, I need to start doing some work around the station to make it a lot cleaner. And even if everything goes to fruition and a bond gets approved, it's like a two-year shovel-ready job. Not even to mention the structural repairs that need to be fixed. I mean, I have puddles in some of the building rooms from the roof. So even if the roof doesn't get fully repaired, which is a very costly endeavor, at least we can get some of the holes that are in the roof, which I've photographed and I've seen with walking the structural engineers around, to get fixed. That's the main premise of, of why I wanted to address the council, just to say that we still need an amount of money to do some of the cosmetic repairs inside the building to make it a little more palatable for the business that we run.
It, it, it's not just cosmetic though. I mean, cosmetic to me looks, you know, sounds like you just want to paint it. I mean, it's more, it's health and safety.
Major structural repairs that need to be done through the trust and the hierarchy of needs, what we, I'm talking about just the everyday plastered walls, paint, peeling paint, cracked windows, windows that don't shut, toilets that are broken.
That's more than cosmetic, I think.
I mean, along with that. I mean, there's electrical wires sticking out of the holes.
I think it's health and safety, yeah. So do you have an estimate of the cost that you might incur for some of these items?
This would have to be, a lot of the work has to be done by licensed certified construction people. And I'd have to get bid specs on it and people to come out and to get that done, you know, on a real quick basis is, is challenging. So I, I, it would take some time to get everything that needed to be done within the department to get it, you know, looking good and to interview those, those companies.
Chief, could we get, could you just do like a list of maybe eight or 10 items of the, the structural issues and also some?
Well, with the building committee, we did a hierarchy of structural repairs and that was well thought out and numbered at a meeting some time ago. I did forward you an email list of, you know, the things off the top of my head, like the ceiling tile stains and the, you know, the peeling paint, the electrical wires, the, some of the plumbing that need to be repaired. So I, yeah, I can walk through with, you know, professional, a few, I have done it already. So yes, we can get those numbers.
So you need to get bids.
Well, yeah, of course. And, and the amount of money that's left in the bond now, I, it's, I, I don't know how much it is or how much is dedicated to this building still, how much they're going to use on the structural repairs. So there's, it, it's still, it's, I don't know if it's, if I use it faster, is it, is it going to deplete or take away from the structural repairs that need to be done? So, but I guess my main concern is that these small, these things that need to be done still need to be done whether you build a new building or not.
Right, right. So is this the amount that we're talking about that's left in one, Jerry Ann, one million sixty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents, right? So that's what's left. That's the balance. Thank you for getting that for us, by the way, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So is, is there any way that it could be less than that right now? Because that's almost a year.
That balance is after all those items. So it's including the revenue that's been earned so far this year up through February. It's including the Tecton invoices we've paid as well as two in, PO balances that are still out there for encumbrances.
Okay.
And it's the parking lot too, right? So we don't have to worry about that?
Yes, that's one of the two.
Yeah, this one, not ours.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So you would have money available, please don't use it all, but you would have money available to go out and get some bids for these items? And I would, I would recommend, I don't know how everybody else feels on the council, but I'd recommend you start getting those as quickly as possible.
Sure. And I know the money's already earmarked through the bond for that building, whatever's left over from here, because that was the plan all along.
Right.
So it would just go in front of the council, I guess, for approval once, to pay the bills.
Madam President, one, one thing to be taken into consideration, DPW Director Pentagas and the building official Enright have been looking into making this building ADA compliant. It is not ADA compliant. The entrance, you need, you need a touchpad to open the doors. We don't have them. You need a touchpad to open the door to get to the elevator. We don't have it. Distance and setbacks also have to be taken into consideration. So one, two of these gentlemen, they're, they're looking into this now. So I don't expect it to be big number, but it's just something to keep in the back of your mind.
How is that possible? How is that possible?
With the new building, how does that happen?
It happens.
Well, some of you may remember that we had, we had to settle with the previous contractor, with Kelson, and we left that contract with the things unfinished.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Does anyone else feel that it's a, a good use of some of that bond money?
I think it would be a good use, yeah.
I don't feel comfortable. Chief, I, I mentioned a meeting that you were, you weren't, you weren't here, you were away on a family vacation.
Well, it wasn't a vacation, but I was out of state.
Okay. I just have a hard time spending, spending a million dollars on a building that we, that we plan, that we are knocking down. And if we don't knock it, well, that's not a million dollars.
He, he won't spend the million. That's what's left, that's the balance of the bond.
Have to spend some money, Tecton already said, to prop up the facade of the wall.
Right, right.
But his repairs aren't going to be a million dollars, I hope.
No, I'm referring to the whole thing with Tecton and the, the, all the temporary repairs. There was a million dollars number being thrown around.
Take a good look because you may need more.
Well, here, this is, this is where I, I, I'm trying, I was trying to explain that you have, we already had a meeting with the building committee on the hierarchy with the structural engineer, what needs to be replaced with the trust advice.
Right.
Considerable structural damage, degradation that needs to be repaired. What I'm talking about is not so much structural. And I say cosmetic in light because in, I've been in the business of construction in my prior career and it's more the peeling paint, the broken windows, the, the worn-out floors. I have thumb driver photographs, the chair where the dispatch floor under the chair of dispatch is worn out with its holes in it. I mean, it's just, you know, chipping formica, chipping plaster, chipping paint, broken windows, windows that don't shut. That, to the, to the point where when it's cold, the toilet floors and the plaster, the porcelain shattered. So the peeling floor paint in the bathroom, the, the mold in the ceiling tiles. I had, like, we're talking like fifty ceiling tiles that are stained. But, and, and at least address the leaks, you know, at, at a minimum. You can do a Band-Aid patch, not the whole gravel roof. But I've always held back at spending money because time with the conversations in the bond and the plan was always when this building was fixed, then they would turn the attention to our building, that's what the bond was about. But then COVID hit and when no one could get in the building, nothing was done. Time froze for two years. So you couldn't get anything done, even if you wanted to. So then we had the serious conversations with Tecton where now even more of the building's weaknesses are exposed and need to be fixed. So I just want to get, so we can be, you know, the building can look a little more palatable to the public and to the men and women that work there.
Right.
And Chief, I agree that I think if we would have done some repairs years ago, we wouldn't be in a situation as bad. I mean, it's still an old building, but I think.
Well, to be honest, we did, I sat with retired chief rentals and we spent thirty to forty thousand dollars on window replacement, new carpet, when the ceiling tile were popping up like potato chips. So we, we have spent some money. We did have a new formica council for the dispatch area that got done. So little by little, little things did get done. But since the town has moved out of the annex side of the town side of the building, nothing's been touched there. The wires are all hanging out of the walls. There's, on our side, the, the paints just got more, more peeling and, and there's more stained ceiling, ceiling tiles. So it's just, it just needs, it needs to be cleaned up and it costs money and you need professionals to do it. I know the, the men and women at the Highway Bond, they, they, they peeled and painted the front handrails. They've done repairs to the, the concrete in the front, which still needs repairs. But here's, that's a great example. So the concrete ramp, that handicap ramp in the front of the building, needs to be demoed and, and major repair because the water, I have pictures of it, is just pushing through the offices where EMA used to be and, and everything's all blown out because of hydraulic pressure from the leaks from the ramp. But there's pads in the front where the concrete can get ripped up, grass can be planted, and small patch concrete in the front. I mean, it's not humongous amounts of money or labor to do it, but it still needs to be done because you need a nice, easy egress. I mean, I have doors that don't shut because the steel aluminum thresholds are bent, so you have to kick the door and just shut the door. You can see light through the rotting rusty doors in the front. So I, I got to get some repairs done.
Yes, you do.
You know, sooner than later.
Mm-hmm, okay. And working with DPW on anything that we can, you know, if we don't have to go out, that would be great, yeah. They're always very responsive. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So I'm going to make that motion to extend the meeting to eleven thirty.
I thought you did that, no?
Hopefully, hopefully not.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see what else we need to just get done. All right, how about new business A, discussion by counsel, what are other action on introduction of finance director? Mr. Zlinski?
Thank you. Well, I'm honored to introduce Anthony Tony St. Ange. Anthony? Anthony currently works at the Department of Revenue for the state of Rhode Island. Anthony currently works at the Department of Revenue for the state of Rhode Island. He has 13 communities that submit their budgets to him for review, he's going to be overseeing that here. His resume is extremely impressive. I, I can go through and enumerate all the things, but, Tony, you've got your 60-second elevator speech, you ready?
Yes, please.
So, I'm very excited to start working for North Smithfield. If, as, if you had asked me four, three or four weeks ago if I had planned on leaving the state, I would have told you no. I threw my hat in the ring and it seemed like very well, they liked everything that I had had to say and what my resume represented. I'm looking forward to working with all the council and everybody else with, with the staff, with the town council. Within what I've done for the state, like you said, I oversee 13 municipalities. That number usually increases or decreases depending on if there's other staff within my department that have left or not. That usually consists of overseeing the audit at the end of the year, the budget actuals, adopt a budget surveys, five-year forecasts, the approval of the tax rate, the, the budget, there's a bunch of different things that we do, and then, of course, we work with the tax collector as well, but there, you know, there's a long list that, you know, that hat changes very frequently, which I figured would come in handy as a finance director here at Town of North Smithfield, so, if there's any questions you guys might have or anybody that might have, I could, feel free to try and answer them right now.
When will you start?
Monday. Monday, I'm taking a week of vacation this week, well, tomorrow's my very last day in the office, it's a farewell, but I'm taking a little week off and then hit the ground running, trying.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you for-
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, discussion by council vote or other action on proposed storm, stormwater ordinance amendment, chapter 14, article one, section 14, Mr. Pentagas?
Madam President, I think this is, the first item is the public hearing, and then there is, so if you open up the public hearing, see if anybody wants to speak, not, you can close it.
Yeah, that was on the second side. All right. Oh my God, we still have another half a page. Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing on chapter 14, article one, section 14 of the code of ordinance of the town of Smithfield with the addition of section 14 dash six, discharge of water.
So moved.
Anyone like to speak on this issue?
Madam President, I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close, second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biergad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. And then the second reading? Do I have to read this into a?
Chief, I think the, the D P W director had explained this at the first reading. He has anything to add since that? Otherwise, I believe the council can move for passage if you're satisfied.
Yes, yes.
May I ask you just one quick question, and at this time of night, it's probably staring me in the face and you'll just tell me where to look, but if, and, and someone had a question of me and I didn't know how to respond, so if there's water coming off someone's property that they're unaware of how it gets there, it's a natural occurrence, it's something that, you know, I mean, how, how would this affect them?
So, they're not aware of how the water's coming off their property?
No, if it, if it's, you know, it could be something that, that it's on their property and it's just a natural through a, a rock formation or, you know, and, and there's no discharge, they're not, they don't have a sump pump, they don't have anything that would normally produce that type of water, how would we handle that?
How we normally handle it now is, it's usually people with sump pumps directly onto the roadway, driveways, or the, the cute way is put the pipe halfway onto the lawn so that it eventually works its way to the roadway. We investigate them, I go out there and I investigate it. If it's coming out of, some issues we have on certain roads now, it comes out of the rock, the ledge?
Yes.
That's not, that's not what we're looking at here. This, this is a result of certain households directly pumping into the roadway.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much, thank you.
Are there any further changes from the?
No, there's, no, there's not.
Pending no changes, I make a motion to approve amending chapter 14, article one, section 14 of the code of ordinances related to discharge of water.
Second.
So, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Rule call?
Mr. Biergad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. I'm going down to new business discussion by council vote or other action on ordinance to amend section 15 dash five, the code of ordinance, chapter 15, no parking at any time on the southerly side of Ridge Road, first reading?
We need to do is accept it and schedule it for a public hearing and second reading, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to schedule this to our next meeting for a public hearing?
Next meeting? I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to schedule to, the public hearing for the next meeting.
Second.
Discussion, if, oh, go ahead. Oh, I was just going to say, if, if, a lot of these are first readings, I think, right? So, maybe we can, unless these are all critical, they need to be done by the next meeting, can we space some of these out? Just, I know our agendas get rather lengthy, and I, I-
Oh, I'm all for that.
I think if we could just space out maybe like some next meeting and then some in the first meeting in April, unless they all have to get done, then I, I don't, I don't know where some of these came from.
Do yours, your two need to get done?
Oh, well, then if-
Do your two amendments need to get done right away?
There are no parking on Ridge?
No, that one's mine.
No, that one needs to get done. We're already in that-
Through trucking and the heavy trucks, you want to get those, yeah?
Okay, then that, that's fine, yeah, I get it, okay.
So, you made a motion-
So, I made a motion to schedule this one for the next meeting.
And I second.
Again, it's for both public hearing and second reading.
And just for discussion, I think the people on Ridge Road have a legitimate complaint, but that complaint was, the church addressed it, and I, the two parties got together, the church addressed it, and I don't see the need for government to get involved if it's been resolved, and my opinion is we give the, give the church a chance to see, they talked to, I, I talked to a couple of the members of the church, they were all spoken to about not parking over there any longer, and then if the problem persists, I say then we create an ordinance, but right now, the two parties got together, they solved the problem, and I don't see the need for the, for government to get involved in it, creating another ordinance. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just want to make sure I understand, that, Madam, I already get, I thought we were on the next one.
No, we're on the southerly side of Ridge Road still.
Southerly side of Ridge Road, we haven't done a, a rule call yet.
We're in discussion.
We're in discussion.
I want to make sure I'm on the same, same-
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biergad?
No.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Next one, discussion by council vote or other action on ordinance to amend section 15 dash five to extend no through trucking on Pine Hill Road up to Pine Hill Road intersection. This is the first reading?
I'll make a motion to schedule for the next, schedule the public hearing and second reading for next meeting.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biergad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. And the next one, discussion by council vote or other action on ordinance to amend section 15 dash nine to reduce the weight limit for trucks from 35,000 pounds to five tons requiring a special permit from the town administrator, the first reading?
I'll make a motion to accept first reading and to schedule second meeting and the public hearing at our next meeting.
Second.
Discussion, I just, I have a question, how is this going to be, like, I know how it's going to be enforced, obviously, someone's going to call and say that there was a truck, but how are people going to be notified, like, what's the process to notify truckers that they need to have a permit? Like, this is, is this just like an ordinance on the books that we can then say, hey, it's like, you know, you drove a 35,000 pound truck down the road you shouldn't have?
Yes, because-
That's the way all law is applied.
Yeah, no, I get it, I was just thinking more practical.
That's the way all law applies. You're, you're responsible to read the law. And truckers are supposed to know where they can go.
I know there's a lot of issues where over by, especially not too far down here, people don't follow it.
One major one.
I just, we answered by saying that with this ordinance once, or if it is passed, that I have a plan of signage that's-
All right, that's what I was looking for, perfect.
Uh, Barrowville, I talked to Chief Lynch, Dave Barrowville, through the request of Mr. Richard, I put, we can three foot by three foot sign on the park near the town on the other side of Molly Road, which has the five ton weight limit. So, I spoke to Lieutenant Bergeron, who's our traffic division, we're thinking of putting it on northern south on route five, so truckers would have see the sign hopefully and then before they return down there.
Awesome.
Would you turn down there?
Yeah.
But as solicitorial lawyers have stated that, you know, if they, by happenstance, are on that road and they don't, there's a section, the ordinance that if they have a purpose to be there, then they have violated, but if they don't, you know, overweight, they should be on that road. So, we're going to have signage on both sides.
Okay.
Doesn't Pound Hill Road have a problem with that too?
Excuse me?
Doesn't Pound Hill Road have a problem?
It's on there.
Yes, well, see, Pound Hill Road, and I spoke with the solicitor about this, is five ton weight limit from wow, that section between Pine Hill Road and route five. It still has a 35,000 pound weight limit, and I think the reason for that was the Nike site and the Boxer Road, the National Guard site, and the restaurant that used to be on that road for deliveries of food that would go down to Pines.
Yeah.
And Pines is no longer there. There would be exceptions for national value costs and local deliveries, but there is no other good purpose for a truck that size to be on that road. So, that's from Pine Hill Road to route seven, that's covered by the corridor.
Yeah.
So, we're going from Pine Hill all the way to route five, Providence Pike, where it was assigned there for 35,000 pounds, but it makes, it makes no sense because if you cross Providence Pike, and now you're going towards Mansaka on Pound Hill Road, it's five tons from there to-
That's right.
Yep, okay.
So, Ms. Rebecca, Christopher, had emailed me on her concern, and I thought it made common sense to make the whole of the weight limit, and I don't think there's any business down that road that would need a truck that size being on there, unless, again, there's exceptions to local deliveries. If it wasn't a local delivery and they needed to use that to transgress, then we have to get it, then-
Gotcha.
How they find that out is if we have to call it.
So, I'm thinking material, sand?
Yes.
Administrator?
Yes.
Material, sand, and stone?
Yeah, but certainly prohibit them from going over the weight limit, exactly right.
Well, only on that side.
Yeah, they have to go the other way.
So, redirect-
I've got any complaints of that company on that side.
Okay, all right.
Because they go route seven.
Right.
But again, if there was a tractor trailer or a truck that size on that road, there is no good reason to be there, and transgressing that road from seven to five-
Seven to five.
To maybe go to Industrial Drive or into the city of Mansaka, that side of the road, they, they should be-
Right, okay, great.
So, if I may further, if there were a lot that was going to be developed with a house and there was going to be heavy activity like concrete trucks, heavy tractors, that type of stuff, they'd get a special permit from the administrator?
Makes sense. Thank you.
Nobody even made a motion yet.
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading and to schedule the second reading and public hearing at our next meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biergad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Um, discussion by council vote or other action on acceptance of letter of engagement, Ms. St. George?
Hi.
Hi.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, this letter is from Alan Booth and Jim Hall, it's to have an appraisal done for Dudley Development, the reservoir, that's pending, well, it's in court. In case we go to court, we need an appraisal. Done, completed?
I wrote we amend it because you, you, you need that, this note has been butted and all it has to be done, right?
Yeah, it's just, he wanted, we had to propose it because it, um, it's gonna, it's not to exceed 5,000, so we had to go in front of council.
So, the cost is $1,200 for the appraisal itself, if I'm reading this correctly, and then like an additional like $3,800 for just research and Zoom calls and, like, how many meetings are we planning with him, how much time does he normally, I mean, it's not a ton of money, but do we anticipate using a lot of time?
So, we don't know how many meetings there'll be, it depends on how long it goes. But he put in here that it wasn't going to exceed 5,000, and if it does, we would renegotiate and come back to the council.
So, they're actually going to attend court depositions and stuff too?
Yes.
And it's saying possibly months, do we have a timeframe on this, or no?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Can we put a timeframe on it?
Yeah, Wendy, Wendy-
Excuse me, may I?
Yeah.
When do you need it, ideally for your purposes, for taxation?
Madam President, may, 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 the court, you may recall, this is, this is a pending lawsuit, and we need a, we need an expert to testify in court and to prepare an expert, we had a discussion about this, that's what the purpose of the contract is. Contract is under the amount requiring any kind of bidding requirement.
Right.
So, it's, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it needs to be done expeditiously because we have a pending lawsuit and we have to get prepared for trial.
Right.
I mean, how long should this normally take? Many months, it looks like it's kind of-
I don't know, it's a special purpose property, it's not a simple matter. We had this discussion about whether it was, you know, and I don't want to get into all the details, but they're preparing this in, for us in preparation for defense of, of the tax assessor's opinion on the value of the land and, and the water.
Well, it says on the front page that the report will be delivered by the middle of March, is, is that the appraisal report? Yes. Okay, so we should have it by the end of March? Yes. Okay, all right.
That makes sense, okay.
All right.
Okay, thanks. I'll make a motion to accept Wimbourn and Summer Tree LLC, real property professionals to provide an assessment of the property identified as plat 004, lot 034A, zero Main Street, North Smithfield.
Second.
Not to exceed 5,000 dollars.
Second.
We have a motion, a second.
By the administrator to sign?
And authorize the administrator to sign the document, the contract of understanding.
Second again.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Biergad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Go to the next one, discussion by council vote or other action on abatements and supplementals.
I have supplementals in the amount of $2,974.19. Do you want me to do abatements too, or you wanna?
No, not yet.
Make a motion to approve supplementals in the amount of $2,974.19.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Buregard?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Miss Alves?
Yes. Abatements, please.
And then I have abatements in the amount of $1,003.19.
Make a motion to approve the abatements in the amount of $1,003.19.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Buregard?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Miss Alves?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, discussion by council vote or other action on master price agreement for tree trimming removal for Public Works.
Good evening. Um, this is, uh, I actually forgot to put a sentence in last year for this, uh, for the amount of $50,000. This is a two-year, uh, contract with Stanley Tree off the state MPA, uh, which I submitted to you and you approved last year. That MPA expires May 31st of 2023. What I failed to put in there was that there is an operational expense each year. So this is kinda, kinda covering ourselves for this fiscal year that we're already in, to spend, not to exceed $50,000.
So this contract is from June 1 of '21 to May 31 and year of '23?
Right. So last, last year, the council approved that contract.
Right.
Which we worked off of last year and this year.
Okay.
Um, but with, um, the Assistant Finance Director, we kinda saw that we didn't put in an amount of money not to exceed for this fiscal year, even though it's budgeted for $50,000. So we're kinda, kinda covering ourselves a little bit on this.
Yep.
So you're just adding not to exceed?
Not to exceed $50,000, which is an approved budget item.
Right, okay, so I will make a motion to accept the tree trimming removal. Uh, let's see, contract with the amendment stating in the amount not to exceed of $50,000.
There's a motion and a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Buregard?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Miss Alves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, discussion by council vote or other action on all current and future grant opportunities. Mr. Ogier?
Um, we can table it. I know, uh, I had asked the administrator for a spreadsheet, but since we're gonna be talking about grants next meeting, we can just.
I can give you a quick update what's going on.
You can give us a quick up. I'm still gonna leave it on the agenda, but.
Okay, well, whatever.
Yeah, let's just, let's table it, you know?
Okay.
It's getting late.
We'll get the spreadsheet, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out.
Okay. Discussion by council vote or other action on options for owner's project manager.
Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll table this one as well. Um, it, it, I don't, I know it's already approaching 11:30, but I think it's just to help with, um, oversight of certain projects and just to make sure that, you know, it's, it's more, it would be more of an, um, an advocate for the town and to help make sure things weren't missed, as we just learned about maybe ADA compliance and stuff like that, and there's potential cost savings as well, so we'll table it.
Okay. Do you wanna move it to the next meeting, or are you just gonna reach out to?
I'll re, I'll reach out to, um, I'll reach out and let you know if it's gonna be next meeting or whatnot.
Okay. Alright, uh, discussion by council vote or other action on hiring a human resource manager for the town. Um, I put this on the agenda, um, because just realizing that there's, um, you know, some things that have come up that we could probably use a human resource manager, because I know we use the benefit coordinator position to do a lot of the actual hands-on employee tasks, so, um, I have acquired a job description for a human resource manager, but I'm looking on getting a job description for the benefits coordinator position, so we can look at the two of them. Um, I just think it's a, it's a good opportunity to have someone in, um, the town that could handle any employee, um, relation issues, um, keep the files updated, HR files updated, and I'm not saying they're not, um, that's, um, but, um, just be a resource for the employees to go to and obviously not be a union person. Um, it would be a non-union, um, position so that people felt comfortable going to that, um, that person. You know, answer any questions on any job availabilities, or also do postings and, um, hirings and all the stuff that goes along with that day-to-day, um, position of an HR person. So now that it's, it's budget season, so Jerian, if you can maybe kinda, um, relay this to the Budget Committee, or if you could relay it to, um, Cynthia to maybe talk about it and see if there's areas in the budget that we might be able to consider looking at adding this person. We can go into more detail once we can find some funding for it. But I think it would, it would be a good addition to the town, um, so that there's resources. And, I mean, this person could also roll out trainings, um, you know, things that we, we just don't do on a regular basis that I think would be beneficial, um, to the town. That was just.
Was that for full-time?
We could probably start with part-time and then, you know, grow into the position, um, because like I said, we would need to obviously segregate the, the position, um, you know, an HR person versus, you know, the benefits coordinator, because I know Karen, you know, you're kinda all over the place, so I think we, it would be good to just kinda have the line in the sand of who does what and, and, uh, move forward with that position. If anyone had any, any other feedback on that, but.
I have a question on that. I thought she's been doing that all this time. It was included in her job description or something. I was wrong with that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, because when we, when we changed Karen's position to benefits coordinator, we had talked about how it wouldn't be like an HR person, it would actually be benefits and payroll and, and not responsible for any, um, employee relation matter, so I think, um, it might be prudent to the town to add that, that position.
How many, Mr. Zelinski, how many employees do we have in the town?
You know, I just counted them in my head the other day. Karen, uh, excluding the school, of course, right? So we have police chief, um, maybe chief can tell us.
Roughly seventy-five.
I thought seventy, yeah, somewhere.
Oh, that includes the police department?
No.
Okay.
Does it, yes, yeah, I'm sorry. I keep thinking school department, yeah.
So fifty-ish?
Less, less than that.
How many twenty?
How many just for the town hall? And, and DPW, so just those two?
Eighteen. What do you have in DPW?
Sixty.
Yeah, fifteen.
So, under forty, thirty-eight.
Oh, thirty-eight.
Yeah, so it'd probably only be a part-time position, but it would just be, um, you know, uh, it, I think it would be beneficial for the town that employees had someone to go to that could answer any questions with, um, you know, and then HR-related, not, not specifically benefits-related, so.
I think the training aspect's a real good aspect.
Yeah, I mean, to do like, to roll out annual trainings, like on, you know, do, uh, virtual trainings and, you know, just to bring us up to date where we should be with.
Rules and regulations.
Right, you know, what's, what's expected and what, you know, like PCI compliance, so I mean, we, we take payments, like we should know that, we should have cybersecurity trainings, like all that stuff that we should be doing on the computer that this person could, um, bring in and start, um, start the, the system.
Um, just for, you said to relay it to the Budget Committee. What department would it fall under? Would it be finance?
It would probably fit under finance, yeah.
And do you have a ballpark salary number? Because they're gonna ask.
I would, I mean, part-time, I would say thirty-five to fifty, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
But we can.
You can check in other.
Yeah, but I would say part-time, maybe on the lower end of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have anything else they wanna add to that, or?
Well, it just seems that, um, we could, we could hire somebody to come in and do that kind of teaching. I, I, I'm not for creating another position with another salary, another benefits, all that stuff, uh, for, for thirty-something employees. I don't know. I think, I just don't think it'd be money well spent.
Well.
I understand the need for it, but I think we can find other ways to do it. It's, to create a whole other position, uh, I'm not, I don't support that.
I think it's actually, I think it is a good idea. Um, you know, the town's budget's almost 50 million. I know it's not a ton of employees, but we've had some stuff come up that's complex in nature that maybe an HR person could have helped navigate. And, you know, I think, um, you know, whether it's related to sick time or other types of situations, you know what I mean? So I think having that additional resource, even if it's not, say, a full-time position or a part-time position, but maybe it's a, um, a consultary position, you know, that, you know, that we're working with, you know, then you don't have the, all the overhead, right? You're just paying the consulting fee for them to come in and maybe to, say, for the first few years, that's what we use, and then as the town continues to grow and change, then we can look to, for it to be a regular position or until we figure out ways to fund the position, but I think, I think it is needed. I think most towns and communities have it, um.
You know what? Uh, I never worked in the corporate world, so can you tell me what an HR person does?
So, HR, my experience working in healthcare is they do stuff with unions, they do stuff, um, on that side with contract negotiations, making sure that things are fair. You can file, if you have an issue with, say, like, um, with somebody, you can go to HR anonymously and report it, and it stays truly anonymous. Now, that changes depending on obviously the size of the organization or the largeness of it. Um, they handle trainings, they handle performance evaluations, they look at salaries, they look at benefits, they look at pretty much everything related, almost everything day-to-day, even operationally, an HR person is usually brought in to help evaluate as well. It's kind of at like, in a high level. I don't know if I'm missing anything.
And then you, and like, in perfect example, like now it's budget season, so an HR person could do a lot of the call-arounds to different communities and find out and get kind of like a wage analysis of, you know, different positions and see where we fall on the spectrum, like, there's so many things that are HR-related that, that don't cross over into Karen's area. Like, you know, and I, I just think the, the biggest one is, is just being a resource there for the employees to go to should somebody feel they need to speak to someone about something, and, and then there's no, you know, it's a resource that I think is needed after, um, yeah.
Alright, you convinced me.
He's tired.
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to extend the meeting until midnight, because it's already 11:30.
No, I'll turn into a pumpkin. Can you make it 11:55?
I'm not making another motion, so.
Is it 11:30 now?
Let's not use it all, yeah.
So Jerian, can, can you just relay this to the Budget Committee so they can review it, and then, um, you know, hopefully they can find it in the budget to, um, to, um, fund it? Thank you.
You're not looking for a vote on that then?
I don't think so. It's just a relay so the Budget Committee can, you know, consider it.
I think we need a second to extend. Did we get one?
Second, to extend the meeting until?
Midnight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, did that, was that everyone? Alright, uh, and then discussion by council vote or other action, a request of three-to-five-year financial plan from the town administrator. Ms. Hamilton?
Yes, I was just wondering if that, I mean, that was actually due in November, and I know that normally that's the time of year that it's done, so we have enough time to anticipate in our budgeting process, so is that, and I've asked like two or three times for this already, just wondering if that's gonna be done soon.
Yeah, as counsel's aware, I did receive a copy or, uh, it was created by the North Smithfield Budget Committee. The analysis was done in 2015. I cannot find any others previous to 215 or pri, after 215. So, uh, today we reached out to Steve Coleman, uh, the state, asking them if they have any archive of these sent in. Speaking with Tony earlier this evening, this is one of the things that he used to review for the state, so we're gonna have an inside person. Tony, do you mind, do you mind sharing, like, um, and not to throw other communities, but what, what has been your findings with this report?
As he walks up, I believe we asked for an analysis for Thursday's meeting to help us decide going forward for the bond for the police station.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is something that's necessary for our town. I don't know if every other town does it, but I think be, because we have so many things that are coming up, um, you know, within the town that would require fiscal analysis of some sort. You know, and I, I, I made a, an example last time of, you know, you buy a car and you do an analysis three to five years ahead, what, what your projected income is, and if you're gonna lose your job, keep your job, you know, can you afford a $250 a month payment or a $400, right? So that, really what I need is to get, I need that information before we can move forward on a lot of these things.
I'm, I, I didn't work today, and I just got the request as of this morning. I had seen it on my email. I didn't sign into work today, but I do plan on, like I said, I do plan on going into the office tomorrow to take a look at how often North Smithfield has sent in five, uh, adopted budget surveys, five-year forecast. The format itself has been simplified compared to what you guys have there, uh, to a COVID format. Uh, it's a lot easier form. Um, like I said, I'll take a look and see what we have on file. To my recollection, um, the adopted budget survey five-year forecast isn't a report that has high compliance across the state, unfortunately. Um, we have, most of our compliance is through the budget to actuals. But, like I said, I can take a look and see when the last one was sent in, and.
Well, I'm, yeah, excuse me, I don't, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I don't care when it was sent in. I want one now, right? That's the thing. That's what I've been asking the administrator for, right? So I don't want a 2015.
You want one created as of, you want one created?
Yeah, we should have had this in November, really, according to state law, right? So I think it's important that we follow that, at least while we know that it's, it's a state law, we should abide by it.
Yeah, so as of tomorrow, then if you, if you want one created, then I can work with Jerian tomorrow. If we have, if she has availability, we can work through that. I can try to make that a priority among the.
If it's your vacation, no, I don't think you have to do that. No, really, that's not, that's not, I mean, that, I would think that would be something that's easy enough for us to get together. We should know what our projections are. I mean, it's not like I'm asking for a 30-year amortization or something. I just need to know three to five years. What do you think, what's coming on, what's going off, what, what debt is being retired, what isn't? I mean, we should have that information already. I don't know why it has to.
And, and to be honest, the prior ones, again, I've only been working for the state for two years this month, um, so I only have two years' worth of five-year budget, uh, five-year forecasts, adopted budget surveys to go back on. And to be completely transparent, some of the municipalities only take what they have for year one and then just add a two-year, or two percent, three percent addition on a year-to-year basis. It's not like it, they put too much thought into it.
Right.
Um, so it's an easy report to make, to be honest, uh, which is.
Yeah, I'm gonna interject. I don't want that.
Yeah, exactly. So like I said, I can, we can create it, but in terms of what it provides and for what you're looking for, it might not be that in-depth. It might, it might not offer that depth, but again, I can, I can talk to Jerian tomorrow, let her know, um, and we can go through it and see if it's what you are looking for, but, and then we can create it regardless.
Okay, well, I know there's no enforcement at the state level probably as well, so that's why people don't do it, right? But we need it, and we've been asking for it for quite a few weeks and still haven't received it, so, uh, any help you can provide.
Yeah, yeah, tomorrow, like I said, I have, I have a few things on the agenda of, for tomorrow, but I'll, like I said, I'll, I'll contact her and we'll try to make it a priority before I, before the end of day.
Okay.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Quickly.
Alright, last item on, uh, last item on the agenda, open forum for agenda.
Well, we have executives though, but.
Yeah, I know, we got this, right?
At the last public.
Agenda items only. Anyone?
Yeah.
I wanted to speak to what was just addressed. I had sent Mr. Z, Zelinski that format that the Budget Committee did in 2015. We did that because the bond was coming up and under consideration. We wanted to see, make sure everybody understood the impact and where the revenue was leaving and where the revenue was coming in. But that's two different things. I think what he's talking about is a, is a report that usually the business managers for the school, for the town just fill in on, online. It's a template that they complete, but I think that what, what I was talking about in the three-to-five-year forecast that I've asked for three years straight, and I've given emails to the Town Council President, Mr., Mr., uh, I'm sorry. Buregard, how could I forget? How could I forget?
I'm the guy you mentioned on your Facebook page.
Yeah, I, I, how could I forget? And the administrator, for the last two years, I've sent emails reminding you that that was due in November, and you just ignore it. So, you know, that is something that other super, and that was supposed to be provided for the school department. And it's so, we're talking about a statute that required, that's under education requirements of law, and, um, I also told you, I think, that you, you could get a copy of Mr. Wood's presentations. They're like forty, 25 to 45 pages, depending on the year. And it's just, it's not a simple chart, a one-page chart with numbers plugged in. So that's the first issue. I, I, and I, you know, we're talking about long-term planning. If you're not even gonna comply with state law that requires some information to be shared to the school department and stuff, then let's. shared to the school department and stuff, then let's not talk about long-term planning. But, you know, either we're gonna do it or we're not gonna do it. But if you're not, if you're gonna ignore the state laws, there's no chance long-term, if long-term planning is ever gonna happen. The other thing was with regard to the, the money for Jeff Porter's committee, years ago, several years ago, the council was convinced to put in $100,000 in the budget for the construction of the concession stand at the middle school. And it was said at the time, I think you were on, John, that it was being proposed that that money go into the account, but it wouldn't be spent. We just put it in reserve to have it there so that when we fill out the grant applications to the Champlin Foundation for money to build the concession stand, you know, we can say that we have some, somebody said the word "skin in the game" was the term that I remember. So where's that money gone? It was, it was initially, in, in one year, showing up in that fund balance as a separate line item, and now it must have gotten merged with others under capital or something. But that money's sitting there, if you need money for Jeff, there it is. There's $100,000 there that shouldn't have been spent, and if it has been spent, I wanna know what it was spent on, because we didn't build the concession stand. So that's the two things I'd like to bring to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we still have that in reserves? It's still sitting there?
Yeah, we discussed it in the last budget.
Yes, it's still sitting in reserves for the use of a concession stand slash bathroom facilities.
Okay.
I was gonna say, that's been there since 2018, I think.
Good, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, executive session, discuss, discussion by council vote on other action regarding general law, 42465A, two sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation, or potential litigation. Three, Leonard Peza and Constance Peza and Material Sand and Stone Corp. versus Town and North Smithfield, case 99-1811, and Material Sand and Stone Corp. and C. Peza and Sons, Inc. versus Town and North Smithfield, case 91-5374.
I'll make a motion and we move into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton? Yes, Mrs. O'Hara. Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Miss Al.
Yes.
[inaudible]
I'm going to make a motion that we come out of executive session, let the record reflect that three votes were taken, one was to extend the meeting and seal the minutes.
I said three votes were taken and one was to extend the meeting.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 And then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second.
Second. I'll say aye.
Aye.
He's insane.